We've got a long meeting, so we'll get started. So I want to call this special meeting of the City Council and Planning Commission to order, and we'll take your call.
Councilmember Lopez, I see him. Councilmember Martinez? Here. Councilmember Rue?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
I'm here.
Mayor Dutre?
Here.
And Planning Commissioner Mendez? Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Bagoon?
Here.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Here.
Chair Martinez. Thank you.
Okay, well, great. Thanks to you for being here today. Welcome our members of the Planning Commission to tonight's joint meeting. Obviously, this is our second workshop on this item, the housing element plan, the general plan, the other associated documents. I think we met earlier last year. I think the only member that wasn't a participant was Xavier. Yeah, you.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I believe.
I'm having trouble hearing you right here.
I believe you were the only member not present in this workshop last year. You were not a member of the Planning Commission at the time. So, but you're having a hard time hearing?
No, I can hear you, but it's a simple question right here.
Okay, all right. Okay. So this is our second one on the workshop here, and I believe the attempt here is to go through this process today, and then we're trying to go to the Planning Commission for a formal hearing in November, and then the City Council's right after that in December, I believe. That's the game plan.
That's correct.
But again, this is the documents that we've seen from last year, and I want to give it over to staff to get started. It's all yours, Mike.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Dutre and fellow City Council members, as well as Chair Martinez of the Planning Commission and the fellow Planning Commissioners that are here tonight. Thank you for all coming. Have you ever been to a rock concert in a major act? They usually have warm-up bands. Well, I'm your warm-up band today. So what I want to do while we wait for our featured speaker to arrive is to just give you a general background of where we're at and how far we've come. So if you recall, most of you, not everybody, in 2018, we embarked on an ambitious project to update our specific plan, I mean, our general plan, for the next 20, 15 to 20 years. Typically, that's the longevity of those plans. And most times when you do kinds of updates like this, it takes longer than you think so, because there's a lot of things that you need to address while you're going through the process. So at that time, we entered agreement with Rangwalla and Associates. Mr. Rangwalla will be here later to give you the feature presentation. And we started this process in earnest, and during that process, we had a lot of workshops, community meetings, and focus group meetings so that we could ascertain the pulse of the community and help to draft, in order to help draft the appropriate goals and policies for our city going forward for the next decade or so. A general plan, as you all probably know, is a requirement of the state for each county and each city. We're required to update these periodically, usually 10- to 15-year increments. Sometimes you stretch out to 20. And it depends on the community that you're working with. Sometimes there's a lot of area to grow in because you have a lot of vacant land, and you take the process and have to keep updating this so that you can keep pace with how things are changing in the world. Other times, you have built-out communities like ourselves and the limited areas to work with, but you have opportunities to create a sense of place, take new policies and approaches to make Montclair a better place to live. And that's what we, I think, at the end of the day, when you look at the documents that are in front of you, that's what we accomplished and we're hoping to bring forward to the end here. We've been doing this for about six years, and so we're hoping and glad to be towards the final steps of that process. As the mayor indicated, the next step tonight is basically to bring you up to speed on where we're at, where we are at the moment. And the next steps would be to formalize the steps to getting approval. The next step would be to the Planning Commission on or about November 12th, and then the first two meetings that it takes, or the two meetings in December before the City Council. I don't know about you guys, but it seems like all the important stuff we have to do always comes to the end of the year, and so that's what we're kind of used to doing. So everything that looks good in the community out there has been approved in December, and so this is no different. The general plan is a strategic document that's adopted by the city, and it provides the goals and policies for development of our community for its time period. And there are nine elements that are included in the general plan document. Those are land use, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, noise, safety, public safety, and environmental justice now. All these elements are addressed in the document that you have before you today, and this is a little bit different format than you might see in different communities. This is a lot more, has a lot more pictorial, looks a little more exciting. There's more document pictures and things in there that help sort of convey the message of what we're trying to accomplish with the general plan update. As I said, we took a long time to go through a number of charrettes and workshops and focus group meetings to make sure that we included what the community was thinking, as well as the elected officials, as well as staff, and hoping to come up with a document that we can all support. Tonight's presentation will, after me, will be Kaiser Rangwalla from Rangwalla and Associates. We have Greg Martin and Eric Feldman from Ringcon Associates. They worked on the environmental review, EIR, for this particular project. And then we have Sarah Walker, who I think is there online, who will talk about the housing element. And then, and she's with National Community Renaissance. And of course, we have Alicia Wintersweig, who's present here tonight to, she's our special counsel from Best Best &amp; Krieger, that helps us get through this process and helps us write the long findings and things that I get to work on next, so. But I wanted to show you a couple of documents on your screen right now. The one on the left that shows the whole city is the general plan, the area that we're working with. So you can see that everything that has the streets in there that's not shaded out is the current boundaries for the community. They go down all the way to Phillips, and of course, they go up to the Upland border on the north, the San Antonio, or Mills Avenue on the west, and Benson Avenue on the east. The plans to the right there, so the top one, that purplish shaded area, is the Amud, which is the Arrow Highway mixed-use district. And this is, this plan is a specific plan that will replace what is currently now the north Montclair specific plan. And the intent here is to take the remnant pieces that were carved out of the much larger north Montclair specific plan, that we ended up taking the downtown specific plan area out of it, and then we took the Montclair Place Districts, 104 acres out of that particular area. So these are the remnant areas. There is an existing specific plan, and this new one will replace it. What's different about this one versus the existing old one is that it's not only updated to be a little more modern, but it would allow for housing, which the current specific plan would not currently do. So this is a way to create maybe, in a semi-industrial area, perhaps some opportunity for workforce housing and for other kinds of housing that might benefit the, maybe the residents or the businesses that could be in that area in the future. So.
If I may just make a quick comment, and not on anything on the element. I appreciate the fact that it's going to be called Arrow Highway. Reason is, and you know, I've talked about this, whenever I hear north something, it's as if you're dividing the city. And I want, and every city that has something where the north of this, the south, the east, the west, other than if that is actually their name, like East Whatever, tends to be dividing a city. I think we need things to unify the city, and this doesn't call out that one area is better than another. I mean, residents, when they heard north Montclair, always said to me, why, do they think they're better than somebody else? So I think this is very.
Let's move on, and there's quite a few of us up here today, so what I'd like to do is get through presentations, we'll stop, and then a lot of people make comments or questions, so I appreciate that. Go ahead.
Okay. So that basically, in a nutshell, is what the Arrow Highway mixed-use district specific plan is. The bottom diagram is in the, I guess that's teal color, indicates the areas, the commercial areas of our community that needed to be, I used to use the word re-thunk, but thought about in a different way, because one of the things about the general plan that's been proposed is to rename our traditional zoning designation. So instead of C2, C3, we're coming up with more creative names to help identify and distinguish this particular general plan from all the others that have been done before. What that necessitated is that we had to come up with the zoning designations in the document so, that would identify the kinds of uses and the kinds of development standards that we would have in this particular district. If you, as you know, our cities started in the 50s, and so a lot of our standards go back to the 1950s. There's a lot of things in there that no longer really apply to modern society, and we don't have particular uses that might be listed in there. So we had to go through the process of re-identifying the kinds of uses that could be in these zones, and we did that also for the Amud specific plan, and we had to, it took a while to do. So since last year, when we sort of had just named for that, we had to actually develop the standards that would be replacing the current zoning standards that are in the municipal code at the moment. So I don't know if I have, Edmin, do we have a table? So what we'll show you here is the land use table for the corridors plan. In the corridors plan, there's development standards in there for building setbacks, all the things that typically go with the zoning code. But we also had to be consistent with the types of uses that were identified, because some of them are in our code now, some are new, some, we had to create these new zoning districts and then figure out which zone is appropriate for any of these uses. So this is example of page one of the land use section of that code. You can see at the top, those are the commercial zoning designations now we have for the corridor plan. There's commerce mixed use, there's commerce industrial, neighborhood edge, and there's neighborhood residential. And each one of those zones have these particular, under different kind of categories of use, like for example, number one is industrial-related types of uses. Then you move to number two, and it's retail identified types of uses. And you can see the table identifies with the single line, it's not permitted, with a P's there, it's a permitted use, and then the CUP indicates that something that has to go to the Planning Commission to get review and approval. And we've tried to be as comprehensive as possible without having, you know, 7,000 different kinds of zoning designations there, but to try to group these and, or come up with standards that would allow them to be, oh, sorry, give the planner the ability to sort of find types of uses that are within a particular land use category there. So that's what this is. Can we move forward to maybe a development stat? Okay, well, let's look at this. This is a specific zoning designation on how the corridors is broken up. The colors indicate the different zoning designations throughout the community. That, remember, these are all commercial zones for the most part, where we have to come up with uses. The vast majority of the city is single-family, and we're not doing any major changes in any of those things, those areas. It's continue to stay single-family, in some cases, multifamily zones, without change. The only changes that would come to those areas would be as a result of state laws, like the ADU law or the SB9 laws that allow those certain zoning designations or properties to be able to be developed in slightly different ways, and those are changing all the time, so. But this corridors plan is primarily just identifying the commercial zones. So Holt Boulevard, Mission Boulevard, Central Avenue are the primary corridors within our community, where all the commercial activity, where the commercial zones exist. So that basically is my introduction to the various documents that you have tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer any of them as best I can.
Thank you, Mike. Any, the planning commissioners have any questions? Any questions on planning commissioners? No?
I have a question. Mike, I apologize if I glossed over your comment. The reason there's not more commercial up in the northern part of this map here, north of the 10, is because that's identified as a different section, or?
Oh, good question. So anything above the freeway, right there, you can see how the freeway ends, and then there's the red color just below it. The vast majority of that area is already under specific plans that this council and commission have approved over the years. So a great portion of it is the Montclair Place District, which basically is 104 acres that comprises the mall, as well as the adjacent properties between Central, Montevista, and Moreno and the freeway. The northern boundaries are, were taken up by the north Montclair downtown specific plan, where all the residential projects that are actually happening right now have occurred, are occurring. So what was left, what used to be the north Montclair specific plan, is now going to be the Arrow Highway mixed-use district. So everything above the freeway is already under a specific plan, which we've worked on and we're happy with, and the remainder will be under this new Arrow Highway.
Thank you.
So that's why you don't see the colors above that.
All right. Any, any councilmembers have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Tanis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question that's probably silly, but I can't help myself. The orange section that says neighborhood edge, I'm not sure what that means, edge, neighborhood edge.
Okay, so that's primarily like on Central Avenue you see there, going north-south, and a little bit on east-west, I think it's just around Arrow, yeah, Holt Boulevard, I'm sorry. That's what you see right now on Central Avenue, where you have some commercial businesses, and then they're separated by an alley, and then there's single-family houses next door. Those properties are going to basically keep their same designation, but with a different, I mean, same status, but with a different name, and the uses that we picked in there are going to be uses that would be compatible between a commercial use and a residential use. So there's, and that's what the intent, that's what neighborhood edge is, because we're at the edge of a neighborhood, and this is, commercial activity can be allowed. I do want to mention one other thing that this, both plans do. It allows for mixed-use development. That's one of the latest trends in the planning world right now, and we don't have any provisions for it, except for in the specific plans in the north. So anybody who might come in with a great idea, with mixed-use residential and commercial, wouldn't be able to do it under our current zoning designation. When this is adopted, we'll be able to entertain the idea of mixed-use development in these commercial zones where it's allowed, and then hopefully, we'll see good projects come about as a result of that sort of mixing of uses.
I have a question. So along Central Avenue corridor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Let's say, I have to control, I have eight, nine of you, I think. Councilmember Rue, did you have something?
Oh, yes. In looking at the commercial-industrial area, it's good that we have that. I, we need it. There's not a lot of places in Southern California left for this, so this is a good opportunity. Are we looking, at some point, if we were to annex some of these areas, potentially expanding that zone?
Well, let me answer this two ways. What you see in purple there does not expand anything that we already have. So nobody's getting their lands changed to anything else. And so it's basically a renaming of that particular zone and allowing for certain developments to occur with new standards that would make for the continued improvement of what's going on, on Mission Boulevard in particular, off of State Street or on Brooks. So that's one thing. If we expand, most of the properties that are in the sphere of influence to the south there, up to Phillips, are residential zones. And so they're likely to stay residential. There may be an opportunity for some mixed use on the west side, because there's already a mix of stuff over there that includes industrial, commercial, as well as residential uses. And we'll have to figure out how to, how to make that happen once these properties become part of the city in, hopefully, a good and planned way, so we get the results we want.
I think it is good to have a commercial-industrial zone and keep a zone that way, because with the changing markets in Southern California, nobody really zones for that anymore, and it's really needed. So I'm glad we're going to keep that that way. Thank you.
Okay. Now we have a question down here. Go ahead.
This is just for information in terms of the Central Avenue corridor. You know, we have several single-family homes that currently exist, you know, and under the news, the new scenario, right? For example, if I own a single-family home there, could I actually, on one particular lot, demolish the house and build a mixed-use development?
We anticipated that particular scenario. The simple answer would be no if it's just a single-family house about 7,000 square feet. The other side of that coin would be yes, if you could assemble enough property to create a wide enough property to make it feasible to develop not only a mixed-use property, but do it in a way that is beneficial to the neighborhood on Central Avenue, but to those, because it's neighborhood edge, to the guys that are still single-family, to the east or west of that street.
So under that scenario, does it make my single-family area non-conforming?
No, the intent is not to, it's not intended to create a non-conforming situation. It's intended to give the opportunity, under the right conditions, to develop the property when you can assemble enough land, and you have a good project that would be feasible to do as a mixed use, then we have the opportunity to proceed. Those kinds of projects would go to the Planning Commission as well, and I think in this particular study, would require conditional use permits so that we can have proper conditions.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So anybody else here in the bottom? No?
I have a question. On our south part of the city, south of Mission or below that, our sphere of influence, the county area, are there plans to annex it? Is there any, any plans in the near future?
Not at this time. This would be something, a policy that, or approach that the City Council would have to decide we want to do or not, but no.
Thank you.
Mike, I can answer that question, too.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the City Council. This is Mikey Flint, as the Director of Economic Development Agency. As you may recall, earlier this year, we did take an agreement to the City Council to enter into a consulting agreement with the current consultant that we're working with as part of the general plan update to look at the feasibility and planning of what could occur in the sphere of influence. So as part of that study, we will be looking at what the feasibility is for zoning, infrastructure, and economic analysis to see what could really occur in the county. There was once a study done, I believe, 10 years ago, that looked at annexing the eastern portion of the sphere of influence, and this one would do the same. It would basically look at the three, you know, if you want to call them three areas of the sphere of influence, and see what would be the best uses for those areas, what the infrastructure costs would be for annexing those areas, as well as the process for annexing. We did also enter into a co-agreement with the County of San Bernardino to receive some funding to move forward on this agreement. The county did provide us with roughly $200,000 to cover the cost for this new study that will be taken on once we're completed with the general plan update. And they will also be having staff members that will be working with city staff, as well as consultants, to see what would be the best uses for these areas, how they would be developed, how infrastructure would be taken into those areas. There's a lot of areas, especially in kind of the middle area of the sphere of influence, that properties are connected to septic, so that would have to be something that we, you know, have to look at, how we would be providing sewer down there, curb, sidewalk, gutter, all of that. But that would be part of the process moving forward, once we are completed with the general plan and move forward with that.
Great, thank you. All right, Councilmember Lopez.
Michael, real quickly, while I was taking some notes, I may have lost what you were saying and gotten confused. I, did I hear you say that both plans would allow for mixed use once the new proposals are adopted? And then I thought I heard you say, both plans, both districts. You use that interchangeably.
Oh, sorry. But the answer is yes. The both, both of the corridors plan, the corridors plan and the Arrow Highway mixed use would allow for mixed-use development under the right conditions and size of properties, et cetera. So it's, it's possible to do now, where we are not able to do it currently.
And thank you for mentioning the two names of the plans in your response. That was going to be my next question for my note-taking. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody else? All right, what would you like to do now, Mike?
Can I tell you something I've always wanted to tell you guys?
You're a big Dodger fan?
That, since I got here, 17 years ago, we adopted two specific, well, you had a specific plan already adopted before I arrived, but then we did the update for the north Montclair downtown specific plan, and then we did the Montclair Place District specific plan. So since then, we've added 748 units in the developments that are up there. So starting with the Paseos, and then Aerostation, and then the Vista Court, and the first Kendry project, by the time you add them all up, it's 788 units, or 48 units. And now, under development, because they're all three underway, we have another 788 units that are under construction, some of which are nearing completion in probably the next few months. And so that's a total of 1,536 units that we've been able to provide in really good projects. We're looking forward to doing more in this specific area, and we're looking forward to completing those specific plans as we can. And what's happening is when somebody takes the risk to do something and spend the money to develop property, and good money, so these are good, these are good developments, it does tend to give interest to other people that are now willing to take the plan, so to speak, and develop their properties. With the coming of the go-line now, that, the risk that they took, that it might come or might not come, is now a reality, that it's here, and that'll probably spawn more development up in that area, that we can do a lot more and see our community changed. I'm happy to have been a part of that with all my colleagues that work with us here, both present as well as past colleagues, and it's been, we're a tiny department, as you know, and we've been able to kind of keep from drowning sometimes. And so I wanted to do a shout-out to my staff as well, and all of you guys that have been part of this project, from, from the planning at the beginning, the Planning Commission and the City Council, decisions to make, that you made over the years.
Are in the works? You said 740 completed?
We have 780, 788 that are now under construction. 350 are at the village at Montclair. They, we have 136 that's under development on the corner, right across from the police station, and we have 302 units that are, just started the grading and construction process over on the old Vulcan site. We're also in discussions with CIM and doing some more development of housing there. So our community is changing, and I think for the good, and we have more opportunities to do that. It'd be, it's a good thing, it's a, once in a lifetime, I keep saying, opportunities, and I'm happy to have been a part of them, so, with all you guys.
Well, yes, we obviously appreciate the hard work from staff. Many years, this goes back to, my daughter's now 21, so we all started this when, before she was born, so at least 21 years ago, we first had discussions about north Montclair. So congratulations. Does this mean that because we have 1,500 units, we meet the arena requirements, we don't have to dump in a housing? We don't have to dump in a housing element plan?
Probably for affordable, I mean, for market rate housing, and we're now working on the opportunity to do more.
Okay. All right. Do we, oh, go ahead.
All right. So.
Go ahead.
If, before I leave, I was asked to ask, allow, is it Eric? She's online? Oh, okay. Erica Lennard, who will, can maybe give a brief presentation on the climate action plans. That's the other document, I think we have.
Before you go, I think Bill has got a question.
The question I have, you mentioned the number of units, 700 and some odd units being built up there. How many of those are affordable?
None at the moment.
Huh?
None of those were affordable at this moment.
That's the problem.
But we have now set up some properties for potential development opportunities.
And you know my bias on this. I struggle because I think we need the affordable more than we need the market rate in the high end, but you know.
Economy, so we have to build market products and then, you know, subsidize affordable products. But let's go to, let's go to the climate next and let's not get silly up here.
Erica, you're on.
All right. Where's Erica?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Who's this?
This is Eric Feldman. I'm the principal in charge of RingCon's climate team.
Yes, we can hear you and it's all yours.
Okay. Well, thank you for having us here today. We're here to present on the climate action plan. The climate action plan was completed together with the general plan and is intended to be a mitigation for the build out of the general plan and to act as a sequoia streamlining sequoia document to use to evaluate projects moving forward. So what is a climate action plan? First and foremost, it's the combination of numerous different technical greenhouse gas analyses that allow us to develop measures to reduce emissions. First and foremost, we complete a greenhouse gas inventory, which acts as a baseline assessment of the community greenhouse gas emissions. Following that, we forecast out future emissions that account for the residential build out and commercial growth in the community out to specific planning horizons consistent with the general plan. In that, there's an establishment of targets which are intended to be consistent with the state's legislation for greenhouse gas reduction, which provides for the community to show that they are doing their fair share to reduce emissions and help achieve the state's targets. Finally, based on that data, we are able to establish measures that influence the specific sectors accounted for in the greenhouse gas inventory. Next slide, please. So why complete a climate action plan? The climate action plan, as I pointed out, helps jurisdictions align with the state climate goals. First and foremost, we have Senate Bill 32, which was adopted in 2016 and mandates the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions by 40% from a baseline of 1990 levels by 2030. The climate action plan also builds off other state legislations such as the clean cars regulations, which transitions vehicles in California to zero emission by 2035. Senate Bill 100, which was adopted in 2018, which actually moves forward the state's electrical grid to be carbon neutral by 2045. And finally, Assembly Bill 1279, which was recently codified in 2022, which calls for carbon neutrality in the state of California by 2045. The state defines carbon neutrality as reducing emissions by 85% by 1990 and then accounting for the remaining emissions through different natural and mechanical sequestration activities. Next slide. So as a first step, we completed a greenhouse gas inventory of the community's 2017 emissions. This inventory looked to four primary sectors to determine the emissions in the community. The first one was energy usage in residential and commercial buildings. The energy usage is electricity provided by the grid and natural gas provided by so kelgans. Following that, we analyzed transportation emissions. These are the on-road passenger vehicles and medium heavy duty vehicles that either originate within the community, end in the community, but do not include emissions from vehicles that pass through the community. We also include lesser emission sources such as waste generation and the methane emission that occurs when they're landfill, the emissions from energy use to deliver water, and the energy use to manage wastewater within the community. When we analyzed those in 2017, we accounted for a total emissions in the community of 283,074 metric tons of CO2. As you can see in the doughnut chart here, the lion's share of the emissions are generated from transportation, almost 70%, at 69%. The second largest is residential and commercial energy use, which is 24%. And then much lesser proportions of 4% for solid waste and 3% for a combination of water usage and wastewater. Next slide. So based on this inventory, it was important that we emphasize measures to specifically mitigate emissions associated with your largest emission sources. So first and foremost, we focused on transportation. Transportation emissions are mitigated usually through three different methodologies. One is to get people outside of their vehicles and participate in public transportation and active transportation mode shifts. And the third one is to emphasize the use of alternative fuels in vehicles. These are like electric vehicles or hydrogen vehicles. The next set of measures were emphasized around the energy usage in buildings. This accounts for joining up with the Clean Power Alliance and also taking into account the benefits of Senate Bill 100. Then leveraging the reduced carbon profile in your electrical grid, we focused on emphasizing the development of all electric new construction, following the building codes, the updated building codes. And then as another area of emphasis for those buildings that aren't electrified, emphasize taking those existing buildings and increasing the energy efficiency of those buildings. For waste, it really is diverting organic waste away from the landfills and also taking advantage of composting opportunities to sequester carbon on land. These are consistent with the state's laws for solid waste and organic waste, Senate Bill 1384. Finally, focusing on water, it really falls to greater water, greater efficiency with water use in the community. That will apply for the nexus of energy used to move water around the city. Next slide. So here we have a slide that depicts three primary curves. The first light blue curve at the top depicts your business as usual emissions. This would be the baseline emissions and then forecasting out the projected growth included in the general plan for residential and commercial growth in the community. The next curve that we see is the adjusted curve. It's the yellow dotted lines. That line takes into consideration the state's share of emission reduction that the city will feel through state legislation. As you can see, it moves the emissions down significantly. Then the final curve here, which is maroon on my screen, and that depicts your targets, which accounts for alignment with the state. And as you can see, provides for an opportunity for greater emissions from jurisdictional measures before 2030. Next slide. So one of the most important things to look at when we're developing measures is not just the greenhouse gas reduction, but also all the co-benefits that are derived from each of those individual measures or actions. The great thing about climate mitigation and the activities used to reduce those emissions is that it provides significant benefits to air quality through the reduce of burning of fossil fuels, increases public health from activities such as active transportation, increased biodiversity from a robust urban forest, jobs and economic gains through the building out of a green economy, and resource efficiency, again, through the reduction of use of resources within the community, both from a waste standpoint and from an energy standpoint. Next slide. Okay. So, thank you. Those are all the slides. This is intended to be a brief introduction into the climate action plan. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have. I will note that from our end on this virtual line, it's quite difficult to hear, but we'll do our best to hear and respond to any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions on the climate? If not, we'll go on to the next subject. And it looks like Kaiser's here. It's all yours.
Mayor, members of the council, planning commission, planning chair, city leadership and members of the community, my heartfelt apologies. I anticipated traffic, but I didn't anticipate two accidents along the way, which took me longer than usual to get here. So I think fundamentally, you know, we were here before you, a year ago, you may recall, in January of 2022, I believe. And we presented what we're presenting to you today. But since then, and after that meeting, we received comments, some very detailed and very insightful comments from your planning commission, as well as comments from the city council. And we have made those edits to the document. But more importantly, your staff has worked with us over the last year to push forward what typically happens after the adoption of the general plan, where you start working on the zoning ordinance and you prepare a zoning map that brings parcels into compliance with the general plan. That step happens after the adoption. In this case, we're bringing you that today. You have the entire package. And there is benefit in doing that. If I can get my first slide, that would be great. Is it possible to maybe? This is like a suspense movie, a well-directed suspense movie where you get to see a little bit of the middle and then you start from the start and then you walk towards that middle. So hopefully it's, it's, thank you. So the scope of the project, just to remind everybody and those watching at home, is to work at the citywide level, but then take a closer dive into certain specific areas to the north of the freeway. And really, again, we've talked about the general plan. The general plan essentially allows the city to step back from your daily routine of being reactive to now being proactive. And Eric, talk about co-benefits. That's essentially what we're looking at. How can we bring certain things together so that the benefits are far greater than the individual benefits that you get? And we'll go through some of the examples. So we're working at the large scale of the entire city at the general plan level, talking about growth preservation, preservation of stable neighborhoods, directing growth in certain areas, and redevelopment in certain areas. And then specifically, we're talking about creating a specific plan. And the difference between a specific plan and a general plan is certainly a closer dive, but the specific plan also includes the regulations. So you have policy, you have vision, policy, and then you have a code that tells you how to implement that vision. So you get the whole package together with implementation policies and strategies in your specific plan. And then as I was mentioning earlier, we were talking specifically, and again, we'll talk about this in a little bit, we were talking specifically in directing growth to certain specific areas of the city, corridors being key amongst them. So we wanted to make sure that we had up to date standards in place. You have some old specific plans, one old specific plan for sure, along hold. And you have some zoning ordinances that may or may not be in conformance with the general plan that you're about to process. So we worked on the corridor code to bring it up to date, up to standard, up to snuff with the general plan. And then while we are doing this, we also had the good fortune. This is incredibly rare to work on the housing element and the climate action plan. I mean, these are two impending crises that we face in the United States and all over the world, housing and climate. I mean, the past week is testament to that. Helene, the 110 degree temperatures that we've had. This is going to be the central focus of general plans as we move forward. I mean, we have been focused on land uses. This is the new focus of the general plan, is how do you provide housing and how do you address climate, not just at the regional level, but also the local level. And I think Eric presented some interesting strategies. And the beauty of working on a general plan is you can incorporate all of these into your general plan. Because often what happens is you work in isolation on your housing element, you work on your climate action plan, and then you got to fix your general plan. In this case, everything is being produced all at once. So this thing is 100% in sync, and that's incredibly rare. You're probably one of the few cities in Southern California to be doing that and embarking on that. Of course, all of this is covered under a program E I R, which I believe Greg will cover when he talks about the program E I R. But that's a huge incentive, particularly to the development community. It's suggesting that you're open for business. So if somebody wants to build here, that's a huge incentive that you offer, that they can tear off an E I R, that not all projects are going to trigger an E I R. And that's a huge saving in time, a huge saving in the time that staff has to invent in processing and your planning commission has to in reviewing those cases. So I will go over the general plan first and then briefly talk about the Amud and the corridor plan. And let me just pause. I was hoping this would be interactive. Y'all have heard this story before, but I want to make sure that if you still have any questions on anything that's just said thus far, I'm happy to pause and answer them.
Go through the general plan, we'll stop there and then go on to the odd plan and corridor plan.
Thank you, Mayor. So the general plan talks about and has these eight elements that are interrelated. We have elements that talk about our natural community that covers air, water, quality of air, quality of water, and access to open space, prosperous, jobs, and. of air, quality of water, and access to open space, prosperous, jobs, and attracting new businesses, but at the same time retaining existing businesses. Active Community talks about how we can integrate parks and healthy into health into our daily living. Creative talks about arts and community, arts and culture. Safe talks about not just safety in terms of police and fire, not just safety in terms of man-made hazards, but also calamities that you encounter every time you have a natural calamity. And then all of this is brought together in the Well-Planned Community, which talks about land use and land use patterns, patterns of development, and their fiscal impacts, because different patterns of development have different fiscal impacts. Some are incredibly powerful and potent and bring revenues into the city, and some are barely positive. So it allows you to focus and think about what are those positive uses and how can we attract them in our city, on our corridors, in our downtown area. And then excessively talks about the wonderful opportunities that you have with your transit station, with your transit stop, and how we can integrate it so that all neighborhoods have access to a variety of modes of transit and mobility. And then there are three lenses that we are applying. We want to make sure that we are resilient as we move forward, because again, as I mentioned, climate, fiscal resiliency, these are going to be important topics as you move forward, and we want to make sure that your plan is certainly helping you achieve your resilience goals. Social Liquidity talks about how this plan can serve everyone within your community. And Vision Zero is one life lost to an accident, or one accident that causes impairment is one too many and shouldn't occur. We should design our roads to be safe. If this weren't enough, you had various planning efforts that engaged, that the city engaged in, and they were successful and new were successful in getting grants to focus in your streets, to focus on safe routes to school, to further evaluate the creek feasibility. And there were already certain specific plans that were underway, so we folded them because we had common consultants working on those plans. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan was produced around the same time. And then following this effort, we will kickstart the specific plan for the sphere of influence, the area that is within your sphere but not within your city right now. And this was a two-and-a-half, three-years process with variety of engagement strategies, and most of you can see yourself up there because you participated in all of these efforts and helped us sift through some of the options that were available. There were a lot of opportunities to gather both information that was quantitative as well as qualitative. We had a number of focus group meetings and workshops. We offered opportunities for people to familiarize with innovative topics through talks that were given during the planning process. But the center of this planning process was a visiting charrette. It was a five-day charrette when we moved our office into the city, and we were here eight hours a day working with the community through an iterative process. And the purpose of this was to look at various options and select a preferred option for the city, a preferred option for growth preservation and redevelopment. And the vision was essentially looking at a green network, looking at opportunities. You have various assets in the city, and there is a wonderful opportunity, certainly with the San Antonio Creek, but also with reimagining your streets as green corridors, so that, yes, people can drive, but people can also walk, bicycle, and take a wide idea of modes to those assets. Streets were reimagined. You have a number of efforts that were already underway. We folded those in and took a look at some of the streets that we are, where growth is being directed, to see if those can also be opportunities, not just to move traffic, but to create special places that connect people, that provide opportunities for economic development, that provide opportunities for healthy living. You have great neighborhoods, stable neighborhoods within the city, and the plan looks at how we can create new neighborhoods to the north, north of the freeway, and certain areas along your corridor. The TOD downtown area is, there is development already underway. It recognizes that. It recognizes the planning efforts that were made thus far and folds that into the general plan, transforming the mall into a town center that's, again, in various stages being implemented, and the revive manufacturing, manufacturing within the Amud area, the Arrow Highway mixed-use area, but also Hold, Mission, and Central Avenue. So to the left is a diagram that shows the areas where growth has been directed, and the highlighted areas show that majority of that is in the downtown area and along the highlighted corridors, the corridors of Arrow, Central, Hold, and Mission. And then to the right is an illustrative drawing that shows the city, and a city is imagined, you know, we work in general plan in slots of 20 years, as if there's something magical about 20 years. But this imagines the city at a built-out. And you may never get here, but that's the vision, and the vision should be overarching and overreaching. And that's how individual steps that you take every 20 years or adjustments that you make, how does that sit with your vision? What changes, what amendments do you need to make? So we're taking a look 100 years at a built-out scenario and working back in 20-year increments. So as I mentioned, you know, the San Antonio Creek is a great, great resource that's perhaps untapped for its potential. It could become that signature asset. Many of the developments that were built in the last two decades have turned their backs. It's not a very pleasant area. It's perhaps safety concerns. But if you reimagine that as a corridor that people want to walk, want to bike, want to recreate, it's an opportunity not just for recreation, for promoting health, but also economic development. So you're getting co-benefits. You're getting multiple benefits, including benefits to the environment, because it is, after all, managing the stormwater within the city. Here's a look at the neighborhood. This is a corridor right behind Central, because we want to make sure that as we are looking at Central and we're looking at some of your corridors, to increase the capacity, increase the intensity to accommodate new growth, new growth that is anticipated in your housing element, we wanted to make sure that it makes a smooth transition into the neighborhood. So here's that first street, and on the right is essentially that first parcel that would back up to Central Avenue. And it's still a house form, but could accommodate maybe two, maybe three units, and it's sitting right across from an existing neighborhood. Walkable streets. This is Central Avenue preserves the green, the evergreen trees that you have that are so majestic and shape your view on Central Avenue, but reimagines it to provide a variety of modes and become an address that people want to open up to, and creates a safe environment, both for commercial uses, but where it's residential use, there are special frontages that provide privacy. So the frontages are changed and altered for different uses along Central Avenue. This is an aerial view of Central Avenue north of the freeway and to the south, to the bottom left is the downtown area, and on the other side is the Amud. And obviously, Central Avenue in Amud provides an interesting opportunity to see what's happening in the downtown and perhaps mirror it in some ways, because as market demand increases and you're building out your downtown, there might be pressures to do something similar on the other side of Central Avenue. So you get that urban place, urban fabric north of the freeway on Central Avenue, and as it meets the existing fabric, it tapers down in height and intensity and has a variety of public realms and open spaces that it plays off. We also talked about a concept of mobility, and I mentioned earlier that we want to connect everybody, not just people who are closest to the station. So if you're further away from the station, then looking at creating mobility sheds where you could have a wide idea of options once you get off the bus to make that last mile, first mile connection. Because most people, if they have to walk more than a mile, they would rather just get in the car and drive all the way. So this is that first mile, last mile connection that could happen in a bicycle or a wide idea of modes, shared transit, once you get off that transit. So this is an example of what that could look like at the intersection of Central and Hold. The question the general plan answers and the Well-Planned Community section answers is, well, how much growth do we currently have? How much growth are we anticipating in the future? And where is that growth going to go? So roughly, you have about 1,1200 units currently in your city. There are total new 7,600 units that will be proposed in the next 20 years. And in terms of hotel, you have 103 rooms. The market study came back and suggested that you have a potential to capture another 300 rooms, particularly along the freeway. And office is 350 in office, and industrial flex is 4.3 million. There's an opportunity, again, to capture, the market study suggested, 1.1 million square feet of additional space. And as far as retail is concerned, you have 4.6 million that is far exceeding the poor capital retail that you have. So we're not proposing any retail. There might be some opportunities to examine some intersections and to repurpose some of the retail, or to reimagine some of the retail establishments that are underperforming or weakened into some other uses. And as you see on the diagram, most of the growth, again, is in the downtown area, north of the freeway, and along the corridors. This is an incremental plan, and I mentioned that it's going to be carried out over the next 20 years, perhaps even longer, and it's going to happen in phases. So we took a look at what that incremental development could be, and what you see in the diagram is, and are different phases, and how those phases could be structured around development potential. And what you see on the right-hand side, and what you will see in the general plan and Amud, in the final pages, is an implementation plan that takes all of these strategies and then prioritizes them as things that you must immediately do. For example, if it's a health-safety issue, then immediately do it. If it's an ongoing issue, you know, your development review process, that's an ongoing process. So you do that all the time. Then there are some short-term strategies. These are low-hanging fruits that cost less money but give you the biggest bang, so we identify those, and we put dollar signs, just as you would for a restaurant or for a hotel room, saying, here's a single dollar, and that single dollar is representing under 100,000. Two-dollar signs might be 100,000 to 500,000. So you get a sense of how expensive this is, what is the priority, and then where is the funding going to come from? We made a conscious effort to not look at you to provide the funding, primarily looking at grant opportunities rather than general funds to implement, and to look at other partners and identify who those partners are that will be responsible for carrying out these tasks. So I want to quickly walk...
We'll stop right there for a second and seeing any questions. I'll start with the Plant Commission. Any Plant Commissioners, any questions in the bottom here? Anybody? Go ahead, Xavier.
Yeah, just one question. On the sketches that they have on here showing the new Central Avenue designs, is that above the 10 freeway or is that below the 10 freeway?
Sir, that would be above the 10 freeway.
Okay. So then, like, truck routes that normally would go there would be changed, routes would be changed, because I couldn't see semi-trucks being able to drive down those areas.
Yeah. So I think that we've designed the streets, and we've, our traffic engineers has looked at the street sections to make sure that trucks can still be accommodated on those streets.
All right.
But, for example, you may look at contradistinctive hours. So if trucks are making deliveries to certain establishments or certain warehouses, and you have the opportunity to create a plan of operation at the Planning Commission level, and if you're reviewing a conditional permit, you might look at opportunities to have hours of distribution or loading or unloading that are contradistinctive to peak hours for traffic, as you do in an urban area, which is what we are hoping for this to transition into. So just as you would in a downtown area in downtown, similarly, you would have similar strategies here. It's designed for truck traffic, but peak hour traffic? Yeah, that's probably not ideal for the truck.
Great. Go ahead.
Me? Yeah, sure. I had a question regarding, obviously, in terms of reimagining streets, you know, reengineering streets. You're looking at Central Avenue in terms of perspectives and the designs you've done, right? But I think we're missing an opportunity on Montevista. Essentially, now that we have the funding in place for the goal line to be extended to the city limits or in the station there, the first mile, last mile connectivity that needs to take in place as part of the oral development. But I think as an opportunity, we should also look at Montevista, essentially from the station all the way to, I would say, San Bernardino, in terms of remaginacy, because you mentioned that most of the developments are occurring north of the freeway, you know, and then, but there is a back door for this development, which is Montevista as well in terms of using the major access in and out, which is the freeway. I feel that Montevista needs to be reimagined and do something or replicate what we do, what we're doing on Central Avenue, you know? Yeah, the second question I also had regarding San Antonio Creek, you know? I've said this before, you know, we have, the Creek idea is great. There's parks out there as well, north of San Jose there. But I think we're missing a golden opportunity in terms of putting something in general plan that utilizes four bases that we have in the community that are really underused, very hidden, and to me, they're an eyesore in the light. I think that we should, as the general plan statement, have a statement in there that encourages the city to have a connectivity between the Channel Trail and the basin, especially in basin number two, if you go from the first one in the north, the second one, and third one. I think it's going to connect a lot of people out there that allows them to have an alternative walking trail, you know? So here's an opportunity for us, looking at the general plan, and I feel we should address that as part of this, because I know it's going to take time. Some of us will be here in the future, may not be here, right? But if it's here, the next 20 years, then whoever's here in succession will look at and say, you know what? Hey, we have an idea, we have a vision. People will say, we don't own the basins. Where there's a will, there's a way of getting it done, you know? And I think we should take this opportunity of addressing that now.
Commissioner Patel, you're absolutely right, and I think these are the exact same comments you made about a year and a half ago, and we took them to heart. And there is language in the plan that addresses both those issues, your comment about Montevista, which is right on, as well as the comment that you made on San Antonio Creek. I believe, you know, about three years ago, when we made this presentation at the Montevista, you were part of that committee there at the Montevista.
No, I was not, I was not.
Or maybe I'm mistaken. But I think your point is well-taken. The comments that we received from the Montevista, what I think that the agency that, it's been a while, so I don't remember the agency's name, but they were concerned about security around the basin. So as long as we secure the basins and make sure that there is no safety concern, they were very much open to the ideas that you are suggesting. So eventually, I think that's the long-term plan, to make that available. So thank you for making that comment, and I want to assure you that we have taken those to heart and addressed them in the planning documents.
Okay. Anybody else down here? How about Mayor Paul Tim Johnson?
I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Jeso, sorry.
I noticed on some of the sketches, some of the pedestrians are riding their bicycles on the sidewalks, where I know most of Montclair, there's... on the sidewalks, where I know most of Montclair, there's bike lanes throughout the city, especially on on Central. Are they, those lanes going to be eliminated to where everybody's using the sidewalks?
No, I I think there are, there are special conditions and special, there's a whole range of options that's available for the city to examine. The general plan is just opening up the, our eyes to those options. What you're seeing here in this sketch is not actually the sidewalk, but it's a special lane that is meant for multipurpose, that is adjacent to the sidewalk, because Central carries, and it doesn't have to be exactly this because it's a general plan. You study it further, you study the sections, you do a cross-section, you start with a survey and and you analyze it and then you, but this is just a concept. And that the concept that we're proposing is the recognition that you have faster-moving traffic on Central and having that buffer of half a ton of metal, a parked car between a person walking and a person biking, gives you incredible safety. If I were, and I'm a, I'm a father of three daughters, and one more daughter's wanting to go biking, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if they were biking on the other side of a parked car. And this has been used several places. And again, we're not suggesting that ought to happen here, but we're just suggesting that's an option that used to be, ought to be considered with all of the other options, Commissioner Sanchez, that 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 are available in terms of bike lanes, class one, class three, to having segregated and and protected bike lanes.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up question. Now with this in mind, were, with the popularity of these electric scooters, electric bicycles, were these type of transportation considered? Because these electric, you know, scooters and and bicycles definitely can get up there in speeds, a lot more faster than a bicycle relatively. And so I'm not sure if that would be safe, if they would be using the same bike lane or what. I'm not sure if that was considered or not. That's all. That was just my question.
Yeah, in terms of micro-transit, we we considered and we at least discussed and reviewed all of the options that are currently available. This field is changing rapidly. And some of the things that you're seeing now were not available five years, ten years ago, and we don't know what the future is. But the concept of having a a mobility hub where, once you get off, that your long trip that you're having to work and you're coming back from work, that you have a variety of options. And and whatever is safe, whatever you deem, the council deemed, safe for the city and and the channel that it deemed safe. Number of cities have, in the in the Southern California environment, allowed for bike lanes, allowed for scooters to be operated in bike lanes. So there are a number of options that are available, that are being examined. It's what works for your city and what works for this particular environment here that we have.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Paul Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that this document is our vision, and what's in here is not absolute, it's just what we think might happen in the future. But there's something, when I was looking on the page that had the residential hotel, office, and industrial flex, the existing and potential units. So my question is, if we're going to increase hotel rooms by two-thirds, where might we put that hotel? And the reason that I'm asking you that question is because some ten, fifteen, twenty years or so ago, when we were first talking about the changes that were happening at Montclair Place in relation to the Transportation Center, there was some discussion about having a hotel facility in that area so that people could come from other places, get off the train, walk to our entertainment space, spend the night, and then walk back to the next morning. And so I wonder if there's space in this vision to make that happen in the north.
You you're absolutely right in your, in your assessment of one of the options that's available, which is right at the station. The other option is, and hotels love it, is at the freeway. So your parcels that are large enough at the freeway, right at the entrance, because these hotels want to advertise how fast you can get there and how fast you can leave. So having those at key intersections with your freeway is is, and I think H R and A when they looked at the hotel rooms, they identified those parcels north of the freeway on either side of Central as potentials for a hotel development. And three hundred rooms, Mayor Portem, is not a whole lot. I mean, it's just one building. So I I'm hoping that as you, as you develop your downtown, there is a lot more potential because hotels are incredibly fiscally positive.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your response.
Okay, Mr. Councilman Lopez.
Yeah, on your, in your presentation, your pages aren't numbered. It's like, I'll direct you to the first title on the page, it's number three, incremental plan. And get that on the screen, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the section there on the screen, our healthy community. What was the purpose of you including that in the presentation? You didn't touch on it.
Councilmember, the purpose was primarily to give a sense of how this plan and its policies and actions are going to be implemented. The diagram to the left suggests they're going to be incremental, they can be implemented in phases, and they're going to be keyed with development opportunities that exist within the city. And the table is essentially one of the eight focus areas in the general plan. So it's a very random selection of a table just to illustrate how a policy is called out. So for example, in this, in this one, and I can't read that small, but it's P five, the the goal is healthy full access, the policy is B five one, and there are a number of actions in, under that, under that policy. And we are identifying the timeframe, whether this is short-term, ongoing, immediate, or long-term, we're identifying who's going to carry it out, who's going to be the responsible party. And then we're identifying a high-level assessment of cost, as I was mentioning earlier, and then funding sources that are available to carry out that strategy. So we're taking implementation to its logical conclusion, providing everything that you would need when you look at a policy and you look at an action on how to implement that.
So with respect to healthy food access, are you recommending that our general plan include these one, two, three, four, five, six, seven points?
Yeah, the, the, these are not our recommendations, Councilmember. These, these are things that came up during discussion on on our healthy community, that the community told us that they were interested in exploring and putting in place, and they're a reflection of their comments.
Because, because I have a problem with three or four of the points in here that I don't think it really should be part of the plan and the policy of the city to adopt because the print is so small. There is an item here, it says, and I'm quoting, restricts approvals of new unhealthy food outlets in areas with an existing high concentration of such stores. And, three, prioritizes the development of healthy food outlets in those areas. When I read that, I read that as the city taking a side and influencing what should be the free market and telling folks that if you are consider, or we consider your proposed fast-food joint unhealthy, therefore, you're not welcome in the city. Now, there's a city to the west of us, west and north, that adopts a complete ban on any fast-food establishments, that's the city of Clermont, and many of their residents feel that that is a little bit inconvenient for them because they have to drive either to Montclair, which I'm glad they do, or Upland to get a quick meal. So I know we have existing fast-food restaurants in the north and along Central, but if this were to be adopted based upon that verbiage, someone like a Chick-fil-A or an In-N-Out or a Canes or a Whataburger would not be able to come and set up shop in the zone. And I don't think that that's the purview of the city or any government, it should be the free market. So I I have a problem with something like that even being mentioned in the proposal being brought to us. Sure, I mean, then we're going to, it says here to offer potential grants to those restaurants that choose to have healthier dining for their customers? That's up to the business owner. Let's face it, most Mexican restaurants are not necessarily the healthiest in how they prepare their foods, but it's appealing. And it should be up to the person that's visiting our town or the resident to go where they please and let them make the decision, not us, to implement that policy. I I just, I have a, I don't think, I think we're getting way too far with respect to the proposal here because I think we're going to limit potential business and limit the potential for money makers in the, in the city.
All right. You made your point, let's ask the question. Kaiser, is this a regulatory recommendation or is this a goal to try to achieve healthy foods in Montclair? What is the purpose of this?
The purpose is to promote healthy foods.
By regulating and not allowing fast-food joints?
The, the, the fast foods are allowed throughout the corridor and 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 I, I don't recollect any place where we disallow fast-food restaurants. This is a policy framework that suggests that we ought to increase options for healthy food, where you have a concentration of unhealthy food because there's a health epidemic within the city. And if you take some of the, and not just this city, in Southern California, if you take a look at some of the stats coming out of the county for Montclair, a number of premature deaths are a result of our diets. And and this is something that the community told us they were interested in pursuing. So if you, as the policymakers, think this is inappropriate, then you have the choice to change that.
So why then in your, in your presentation does it say, restrict approvals of new and healthy food outlets in areas with an existing high concentration, et cetera, et cetera, if we're not going to limit that? And by the way, that's fine, what you just stated with respect to statistics, but it's not our role, nor is it yours, to play doctor. That is up to the individual to make choices for themselves.
I think, I think we can move on. I think we, we've hit the point. Do any members up here?
Apparently, people don't like what I have to say in here because it hits home because it's true what I'm saying.
No, 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 no.
It's too restrictive.
Well, do anybody here feel the same way?
I do.
My left, anybody feel the same way? Any comments?
I think we need to give people options and let them make their own decisions.
I'm sorry?
We should give people options and let them make their own decisions.
Exactly.
So if they have a choice between fast food and healthy food, it will be what the market will bear, but we should at least give them options for healthier food.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez, you have something to say?
Yeah, and, you know, I'll keep it brief because I'm not sure this is the time to discuss this, but just to provide a counterargument to Councilmember Lopez's point, I, the idea behind this plan is to create a walkable community, and how can we create a walkable community and, and really say that the idea is to grant a walkability to all of our residents if we are not providing all of our residents an opportunity to access what they need to access. What they need to access is grocery stores, healthy food opportunities, you know, and I believe it was even Councilmember Lopez at one of our meetings who, who said that, you know, I I wouldn't be able to access Stater Brothers from the trail, so I won't use it, or something to that effect. So these, it it goes to show that it is important that we have healthy alternatives to the liquor stores and the fast-food options that are popping up around the communities, especially those that are in the communities that are more densely packed. We need to make sure that they have opportunities. So I, I would respectfully disagree.
Okay. Any of the commissioners have anything to say?
Yep.
Commissioner, no?
I, I have one more. Councilman Lopez, your, your points in the big picture are very well-taken, sir. However, I believe you're being too narrow in your definition of restrictive. That's just a choice of words, sir. It's not going to mean that we're going to develop laws and regulations based on that. In fact, restrictive could simply mean to complement existing codes, which there's no code in Montclair that I'm aware of that says you cannot build a fast-food restaurant. So your narrow interpretation is just that. You gotta loosen up a little bit. It's, it's just a choice of words. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Rue?
Yes, on this specific issue, because I have other comments. On this specific issue, I see a bit of hypocrisy. We're told with housing, oh, it's a market-rate economy, we have to do what the free market wants. But when it comes to food, now we want to be able to dictate to the free market what kind of foods we have. If the free market sees a need for a health food store here in Montclair, they will bring one here. If they see the need for a vegetarian restaurant, they will bring one here. That's how the free market operates. I think we're trying to fix this because we don't like the existing Montclair. We want to turn this into some other type of a city. That's how I'm seeing this, not you, sir, but everybody who's agreeing with us. You know, we are what we are, and we want to try to turn this into some other city. And this is exactly where this is headed. And at some point, maybe not this council, but another council will turn around and say, no, you can't have this, this, or this. When they've tried this in other parts of California to restrict certain fast-food things, the people just go to those stores. If they don't have a fast-food restaurant in their community, they'll just go to another neighborhood and buy one, or buy their food. I think we need to look at this based on a free market. We hear about the residents of Montclair aren't healthy. Well, some of that has to do with the fact that well over twenty percent of our families are at or below the poverty line. They can't afford healthy food, even if it was right next door to them.
Right.
That's the problem, and we know it. So on this issue, that's what I have to say. I have other items, but I don't know if this is the time to bring it up or not.
Well, at this time, Council, Councilman Lopez has the floor, but.
Okay. One more point.
I believe that, I believe these, go ahead, you got one more point on this issue?
Yeah. Well, sir, given the discussion and given the comment made by two speakers ago, I still have a problem with it because I'm quoting what's in your document. So if anybody doesn't like it, get mad at him for putting it in the document, not me, I'm just quoting it. Adopt land-use regulations to limit unhealthy food outlet density. Examples: fast-food, liquor, and convenience stores. So you are indeed suggesting as a proposal that we adopt a policy to limit them. It's clear as day, I'm not making this up, and I'm not being uptight or I need to loosen up. It's in the language, so I'm not being far-fetched, guys. I agree, give them options, as Ms. Johnson said, but let's not regulate and limit others from providing the residents those options. And residents can make their own decisions on whether they want to eat healthy or not. That's up to them. We should not be playing the role of doctor and listening to some statistics about healthy or unhealthy diseases and eating. That's, that's the whole option of freedom in this country, and let's not regulate that.
So what do you suggest, take it out?
I would, I would suggest that whole section be taken out, yes. On number five, our healthy community.
Go ahead.
You know, I like, I like the document, maybe it needs to be reworded because we don't want a liquor store in every corner.
No, I agree.
And, and so we do need to bring healthy options, we do. I'm always telling my kids, don't, don't go eat out all the time, eat at home, it isn't healthy. And there's programs on TV that show that the poor neighborhoods you mentioned in Los Angeles, they just, they're provided with all of this junk food right there, and the the kids go over there and grab all the junk. I'm not talking about fast food, I'm talking about convenience stores, liquor stores. So, yeah, we, we, we need to keep the document in there, but reword it. And then we can always change it, this council, this commission later on, but. But some verbiage, but not, I don't think we should just strike it out. I think we revisit it or, but, but we do need to. You yourself told me one time about the diabetes type two. You know, we need to eat healthier and you lost a lot of weight because we do need to think about it. It is our responsibility.
But I made that choice.
Yeah, that's a choice, but we have to provide those choices. So I think we just need to reword the document, keep it in there. It is, it is, like you said, a, you know, we're on a, you know, that's what capitalism is for housing and this, so. But I just, I think we just need to maybe reword it, revisit it, or, or, we're not making regulations, we're not, we're not making a code, but I think we need to look at it.
Yes, Ed.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may add some clarification for a moment. The idea is conceptual and perhaps the best way to clarify this is that it borrows from the ABC practice in relation to saturation. So if there's a particular neighborhood or a particular zone in a community where there are a number of alcoholic establishments, ABC requires that we do an evaluation to determine if the area is saturated with too many businesses that are selling alcoholic beverages to the community and making it accessible beyond what it should be accessible, particularly for example, if it's near highways. If you have a lot of locations that are selling alcoholic beverages, it gives people a greater opportunity to get off the freeway, get some alcohol, get it in their system, and get back on the highways. Even in neighborhoods where there are problems with crime, ABC asks that we look at these particular areas and determine if, when there's a new applicant for an alcoholic beverage permit, is there saturation in that community? You're not outlawing alcohol, you're not outlawing businesses that want to sell alcohol in those neighborhoods, but what you're saying is there needs to be a limitation on the number of businesses because it feeds into something like crime or it feeds into people getting on the freeway and drinking because they find it easily accessible off of freeways. The same idea here is that if a particular neighborhood has a lot of fast food businesses and there's a lack of healthy eating establishments, look at that and see if there is a saturation of this kind of a business and do you need more businesses that provide healthy foods so that residents in that particular community can take advantage of that and it's close and convenient to them? Just like when you go into a lot of neighborhoods where there's a lack of grocery stores. The effort for communities is to try and bring grocery stores to that location because they are grocery deserts. Food is not easily available. And so there's an effort in the state to try and have cities look at making it possible to bring grocery stores into those particular neighborhoods. This is the same thing. If there's a lack of healthy eating, food eating establishments, our intent and desire is to try and bring some of those into that area, not outlaw or eliminate fast food establishments, allow them to exist. But if there's already three hamburger stands in a particular block, why do you need a fourth? Don't you want to encourage something that provides other types of food like salads or something else that is more healthy? And I think that's the intent. It's not to establish codes that will prohibit them, but simply to give staff the opportunity to look at the issue of saturation, to determine if there are too many of one type of business and can we create opportunities for other types of businesses that satisfy, satisfy another need in the community? And that, I think, is what we're focusing on.
Okay. I'll suggest that perhaps that A 5.1A, maybe that language be re-modified to what Ed said more because I, that's what I'm thinking over concentration. So perhaps again, staff can look at that paragraph and rewrite it. So Councilmember Lopez, you still have the floor?
Yeah, Ms., um, to Mr. Star's point, I'm not disagreeing with you with respect to alcohol establishments or convenience stores that Sergio brought up. I, I would say that our present ordinance and practice is already working in limiting the number of those that we have in the city. So therefore, something like this is not needed. The current practice is working. An establishment that wants to sell alcohol obviously comes to planning, they get voted up or down on a CUP, a conditional use permit for their alcohol license. We're doing fine with respect to controlling the number. But what I think is going to happen with respect to allowing, you said this salad shop thing, which by the way, Chop Shop or something in Upland is an excellent place. But they came on their own to Upland, they saw a shopping center, they really wanted to be there. And, and there were studies and all, so are we going to then, is the city going to then be in a position to actively recruit certain healthy establishments over non-healthy establishments? In the event that we have three hamburger shops on the corner, we need to fill the fourth with something healthy? Because then we come into a whole different dynamic of preferential treatment for one business over the other. That's what I'm trying to avoid, the perception that that would happen.
So like I said again, let's, let's rework the paragraph there, adopt land use regulations to limit unhealthy foods. Let's work on that. The other provisions in there, you know, that talks about aim to increase SNAP, CalFresh enrollment, and incentivize grants, you know, programs to encourage restaurants to create healthier dining experiences, our healthy Montclair initiatives, I think that's all good, but let's just work on that first one there. When it mentions the word regulations and define what, better what that's supposed to mean.
Yeah, we'll do that, but just to respond to the question about do we actually go out and try to recruit? Yes, the ICSC, the city goes to the International Conference Center for the very purpose of trying to recruit businesses to the city. The, all of the development that occurs in the city is not necessarily by random chance. It is because you have a staff that is actively out there trying to secure businesses coming to the city, trying to attract the interest of developers, working with potential developers to bring projects to the community. This is not random, this is effort on the part of the city. Some of it is obviously random when somebody just comes to the counter at City Hall and says that they want to open a business, but a lot of this is designed effort on the part of the city to follow the directions of the city council to create a more inclusive community that addresses the needs of all of the residents. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, so I think we resolve that. Or you have anything else on your side? Your, Councilmember Martinez, your light's up.
Yeah, I had one more quick point, if we could go back to the last slide.
Not the same issue, I hope.
What's that?
Go ahead.
So as we develop and our, our housing prices go up, we also need to weigh the fact that we don't want to run our existing residents out of the city. That's a huge concern of mine. We want to make sure that this is a place that our residents can still live and afford to live. And I, I, I love the inclusion of this healthy food access provision because, you know, this aims to increase the SNAP and CalFresh enrollment. To Councilmember Rue's point about affordability of food, there you go. This supports food banks, pantries, and other sources that help provide federal food assistance. This healthy food access is developed to encourage the equitable distribution of healthy food retail to ensure that the healthy food would be equitably distributed across our city, not necessarily in, you know, just one location or one neighborhood. And as to A 5.1A, you know, this is not, again, saying that these fast food, liquor, and convenience stores will not exist, but just that the regulations would limit the density. So the fact that multiple would exist in one small location, so. Overall, I, I think this is a fantastic idea, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the council have anything to say?
I have some other comments other than just this. I'll lead off with the food thing. Again, I believe it's a free market. If the free market wants a vegetarian restaurant in town, the vegetarian restaurant will be here. We could give it all the subsidies in the world and it's gonna die if there isn't a market. Most of our residents who are poor could not afford a salad restaurant, they couldn't afford a vegetarian restaurant, they can barely afford the food they have. There's a difference to me between a CalFresh program and putting in vegetarian restaurants. I guarantee you tomorrow that, and I know this is not gonna be popular, but I don't care. If Flemings or, let make it Ruth's Chris wanted to come into the city, they are not healthy food. We would do everything we can to process that application as fast as we could. This is about having a situation where we can brag to people that we have a healthy food place. I'm more worried about the 20% of our families who struggle to eat every day. They're not running to McDonald's, they can't afford it. So I've said that. A couple of other items, I could go on for the next three hours, but I won't. We're talking about a climate action plan. That's fine. We have been told that the reason we're having this is because, just look around us, the climate is changing. Well, we have drought conditions throughout California still. The next drought is right around the corner. At the same time, we're so concerned about the environment, we're proposing all these pretty green spaces that are gonna take a lot of water. They need to be drought tolerant spaces, not necessarily pretty green spaces. There's a difference. So when we put in these pretty green spaces, how are we going to water them in a drought? We need to make sure that, I'm going to say this, every builder who comes to town puts only drought tolerant in. I'm sick and tired of seeing all the other. Again, to me, and it's not you, sir, it's a status symbol with the city of being able to say, we have green this, green that, green the other. We need drought tolerant. We talk about climate action, climate action is dependent on making sure that we do everything we can for drought tolerant landscaping in that end. We know that, we've known this for years and we push back on it. I also want to concur with Commissioner Patel about Montavista Avenue. He's absolutely right. We need to use that and recognize it as the corridor that it is. I'm concerned when I start to see that we want to narrow streets. We don't want people in town, what we want to do is close the city down. Cities that are welcoming have wide boulevards, wide streets, get people in town, move the traffic through. We see a problem right now where Montavista narrows at San Bernardino Street. People try to gun the light, they try to speed because they want to get down that street. Narrowing it doesn't do anything. We have trucks that need to go through the city and so now we're talking about regulating the hours they can deliver. We have retail, retail depends on truck deliveries. I don't think it's our job to dictate to the trucking industry and the retailers in a free market. I keep hearing free market. Oh, wait, that only exists for housing. That when it comes to these trucks, we need to make sure they can move through the city, deliver when they need to. We've had some problems with the ports. Last week there was a fire, Vincent Thomas Bridge. Trains were backed up to Yuma, don't tell me they weren't, I talked to somebody with Union Pacific. Businesses that depend on just-in-time delivery were backed up, now they need those goods. But we're gonna regulate in the future when these trucks can deliver items. I think we need to let the retailers figure that out themselves. And again, not your fault, sir. Other things in here, oh. Now, this isn't part of climate action, but I'll tie it in. California, we need 200,000 housing units minimum last year. We built 96,000 in the entire state last year. Of that 96,000, 40% were ownership. Guess how many were affordable? Zero. These aren't my statistics, it's HCD. Of the remaining 60%, 2% of the remaining 60%, they were rental, only 2% affordable. We need to start looking at this. If we care about our working class and our poor families, we need to make sure there's a place for them to live. We can't keep pushing out the margins as far as we can away from us because we don't want to have it, because we have an inferiority complex about having working class people in town. We just have to look at that. I want to see what we can do. Climate, um, oh, we're talking about bicycle lanes. I don't know how much they'd be used. I've taken the strong, uh, point to start driving a lot of these areas. On Fridays, I drive from meeting in Ranch in Cucamonga back to my office in Glendora. I drive Foothill from Milliken. Bicycle lanes everywhere, I see very few people on them. I drive baseline, bicycle lanes everywhere, I see very few people on them. Arrow, very few people on them. Bonita, very few people on them. If you go into downtown Claremont, there's some people driving them in downtown Claremont. And once, in a blue moon, I may see somebody on a bicycle on Foothill. We've had some non-hot weekends. I've specifically gone out and driven where the bicycles are. There's nobody there. The first and last mile isn't gonna be solved by somebody getting off the train, jumping on a bike, and pedaling to their office. They're not going to do that, there are very few people who can. We need to start considering what this does when we start narrowing streets. We put in bicycle lanes that aren't being used. Case in point, about three weeks ago, it was on KNX, the city of West Hollywood, far from here, but a city, wanted to expand bicycle lanes. They voted to expand three to two. Residents were upset, they didn't want it. On KNX, several residents said, you're not gonna magically get people into bicycles and abandon their cars. We're not. I believe in mass transit, I'm probably the only one on this council that actually does take mass transit. And I go to the stops, I don't see anybody. I see very few taking a bicycle. They have bicycle racks there, those are the people riding home. So I think we need to consider before we start expanding on all the bicycles. I, I know my time is up, I'm being told to not say anything anymore, but that's how I feel. I could continue, maybe I need to write my own op-ed.
Mayor, if I can, I just wanted to.
First of all, can you clarify the traffic? Is there something in here talks about truck traffic hours and restrictions and all that in the plan? I'm sorry.
No, no, we, we're not proposing any truck traffic hours or any restrictions or any codes that would limit the hours that the trucks could deliver traffic, could deliver merchandise to the retail establishments or to the warehouses. I just want to make a point of note. One of her consultants who's gonna present on the housing element has a, has a pending need to be with her daughter and she will be here with us at 7:45, so if the mayor and the council feels appropriate, maybe we can do the housing next and then I'll come back and do the, that will allow her to be with her daughter.
All right, housing element plan?
Thank you, sir.
Sounds good. Okay.
Well, I believe we're gonna look at housing now, is that correct, Kaiser? That's rock.
I'll keep the presentation to that. There, are you on the call?
Yep, I'm here, can you hear me okay?
Yes, it's, the floor's yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you for having me. I'm Sarah Walker, I'm a project manager with National Community Renaissance and I prepared the city's 2021 to 2029 housing element. The housing element update was initiated along with the general plan update back in 2020 and the city did receive their letter of substantial compliance on July 27th of 2022. Next slide. So as a quick refresher, the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA, for Montclair for the 2021 to 2029 planning period was 2,593 units. And this included roughly 1,078 units for low and very low income households, 339, 99 for moderate, and just over 1,100 for above moderate income. Next slide. So to meet the city's RENA, the city established a housing plan with four goals. The first goal identified was to improve and conserve the existing housing stock, which included programs like code enforcement and housing rehabilitation programs. Goal two focused on removing and mitigating constraints to the improvement or development of housing, which included programs such as establishing objective design standards and reviewing the city zoning code for consistency with state law. Goal three was to provide a variety of housing types to accommodate special needs groups and all economic segments of the city. This included programs that encouraged lot consolidation and rezoning to accommodate. This included programs that encourage lot consolidation and rezoning to accommodate the RENA as well as an inclusionary housing ordinance. And finally, the fourth goal was to provide equal housing opportunities and affirmatively further fair housing for all residents, including those with special needs. In addition to the housing plan, city staff was also required to identify land sufficient to facilitate the development of housing at a variety of income levels in alignment with the 2021 to 2029 RENA. So ultimately, 25 opportunity areas were selected that could be developed or redeveloped with residential uses. And as you can see, these sites are predominantly located along corridors, including Hope Boulevard, Mission Boulevard, and in the northern section of the city around Montclair Place and the Trans Center. In total, we identified roughly 146 acres that can accommodate approximately 4,196 units. And this total is distributed amongst the RENA income categories. Next slide. So this table shows by income category how the city plans to accommodate their RENA allocation. We first reduced the RENA by any projects that were in the city's development pipeline, which were shown as credits on that kind of second line in gray. We also estimated the number of accessory dwelling units that are likely to occur during the planning period, which was estimated to be roughly 10 annually. And while this could be up for debate, it was a very strict algorithm that we had to work with HCD on and this is what they allowed us to include. And then we also showed the number of units expected to be accommodated through the land inventory, which was, as I mentioned, 4,196. So on the bottom row, you have, you can see that the city has a surplus in all of the different income categories and is more than able to accommodate the RENA for the planning period. Next slide. So for next steps, the city, as I mentioned, does have their letter of substantial compliance. The city needs to adopt the housing element along with the general plan, as well as the specific plans, which include the rezoning, which is tied to the implementation of the housing element. And then these documents need to be submitted back to HCD for a final certification review, which typically takes about 90 days. And from there, the city would be deemed in compliance. I am here if you have any questions. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the housing element plan by any of the commissioners? If not, how about the city council? Go ahead, Sergio.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I heard a comment. I don't know how to ask this. I know we, we have a small, our brothers and sisters that are homeless. I know we have a small problem with it, not like some of the cities in Los Angeles. And I believe they were talking about Downey on the news right prior before I came to the meeting. Something, something to the effect that, because I think it was Downey, but correct me, lost their compliance. I think it was this compliance here. I was trying to, was it Norwalk?
Norwalk, yeah.
Thank you for the correction.
And Huntington Beach is another one.
They lost their compliance because they didn't meet the homeless housing. I know we don't have that yet, but how does that play into us? I, I know, because I bring up the homeless often. I, I know it's, it's a very delicate situation and as I said before, what, what is the answer?
I'm not sure. Can somebody answer what's the issue with Norwalk?
What was, they lost their, I think they lost their compliance with, with the.
Housing element plan? They didn't have it, they didn't have a complied housing element plan?
Yeah, but does that, my question is.
Oh, they weren't in compliance.
They weren't in compliance.
This was just, I, I just read the article today. I'm not interrupting, I just.
No, no, no. Explain what it was, because I only caught it.
Then they decided that they didn't want to have any housing and put a ban on the construction of low-income housing and homeless housing. The state gave them some time to try to change that. The city chose not to. And so it was either yesterday or today, the state decertified them as far as housing is concerned.
Yeah.
They're threatening to take it to court.
How does that affect us? Thanks. Thank you, Bill, for, thank you, Bill, for correcting.
We, we are attempting, I don't know if Mikey Fontes is on the phone can explain, but we have a temporary approval from the state in our housing element plan draft. And I believe we have to have this adopted by the end of the year, if I'm correct, which we're moving forward to. Am I correct, Mikey? You there?
Uh, yes, that's correct. So the intent is for us to have the housing element as well as the rezoning adopted by the end of this year in order to be compliant with HCD.
So that's what we're doing.
Okay. Good. I just was wondering how that was affecting us. We're so far, we're good, but we got to get this done. That's where we are right now. All right. Anybody else got a question?
And thank you, Councilman Ru.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
It's just a, it's a comment, actually, in terms of housing element and in terms of opportunity areas. If you look at page B5 and then B7.
Of the, of the element plan?
Yeah, in the element plan. We identified two areas, area, opportunity area one and area three, but those approved in terms of construction. So do we still have to include this in the housing element just for my benefit?
Is this document you're speaking of?
Yes, yeah.
B5 and B7, what page is that on?
Yeah, at the end, at the end, yeah.
What page?
B5.
Oh, in the back.
At the back and, and B7.
All right, B5s and B7, okay. So B5 and B7, go ahead.
And B11, you know?
B11, okay.
Yeah. So I'm saying in, in terms of opportunity area one, it was already approved by, by the city and the commission, I would say a year, 18 months ago. Isn't that already called for in terms of housing element? Should that still be part of it in this, in this package?
Well, this is all new. I don't know if the presenter can enlighten us more, but this is all new. We're, in the old days, he didn't have to do this. He's opportunity areas in the old element plans. But because the state legislator passed new bills, we're required to do this, up to identify sites, enough sites to meet the number of units in our RENA plan. Am I correct, presenter or Mikey?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
So that's why these have been added. So this is all new. This wasn't like this before, so.
Pardon me.
You know, the state is getting more tough on the housing element plans. In the old days, you just create these plans, get the state approval. And Mikey, what did you do? Put in the bookshelf, collect dust? Is that what we did, basically?
Yes, that's correct. So if you look at the housing opportunity site, you can see we've already met our goal for number one and number four.
Right.
Number four is the Village at Montclair, Montclair Station project. And then number one will be the future Marlowe site that's currently being graded.
Graded right now, yeah.
By Tramco Residential.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to point out that our current housing element does make provisions for emergency housing and other aspects with, that are also part of this particular proposal for the new one. So the, the last one, the years, the housing element were, were in effect or over. And then this one would replace and create the next, for the next eight years, I think next eight years, the opportunities for us to be able to accommodate affordable housing through the community. So we, and then just in recent, this year, we approved a subdivision with four affordable housing, single-family units, which don't happen very, very often, but the planning commission approved a subdivision where we have 22 units and four of those would be for affordable housing.
Okay, Councilman Ru.
Yes, I, I will follow up with Commissioner Segun. Thank you for bringing that up. That's an important issue. I really think it's important that every community takes seriously the unhoused. I'll preface this with, every year around December 25th, we will hear everybody talk about, if you're Christian, the birth of an infant in a manger, the world's first recorded unhoused family. And we celebrate that. But if it comes to those communities and asks them to house some unhoused, then they push back. We need congregate units. We need something far away. We need 500-bed shelters where they get to do whatever and then maybe come back. I can point to some communities not that far from here and anybody who wants to, I'm very willing to work with them to take you on a tour. City of Azusa, right on Foothill Boulevard, not too far from here. Very nice tiny home village for the homeless. They're moving them through. City of Baldwin Park, again, not too far from here, three tiny home villages, and they are winning awards for this. They're moving the homeless through in a tremendous way, training, education, services. City of Almonte does that. City of Pomona has a homeless shelter for veterans that is world-class. It is beautiful. If you're an unhoused veteran, you can go there. They have everything you need and you will begin at some point to transition out back to regular life again. We shouldn't be afraid of homeless. I realize many cities, especially in San Bernardino County, again, I don't care, will tell you that it needs to be put to city A, to B, to C, to D, because I think there's an image issue. I've heard quite frequently, oh, San Bernardino County's image. Well, what's wrong with the image of a, a city that has said, we've embraced the homeless, we're going to take care of them? It's part of a housing element. We need to do it. I'm seeing all this wonderful, these numbers, and where is the housing for the low to moderate income families? We also need intergenerational wealth building. We need to find a way to get ownership for those families. And I think that's where we need to start moving. Instead of worrying about glamorous people who were not here, who will come here for a little bit and then move on because they can afford $7,000 a month in rent, we need to start looking at a family of four making 140 a year and the fact they can't afford to buy a home in this city, they're even going to struggle to live here. So we need to start looking at that. Those are realistic statistics. It's the way it is. So we need to really be very careful with this. I quite frankly applaud the state of California for what they did with Norwalk. I think it's about time. We should not be so elitist that we're afraid to have low to moderate income families in our community and afraid to have the homeless. That was essentially what Norwalk said. When you go back to the articles on it, we don't want those people here. So we need to look at this. Just because it's Norwalk today doesn't mean it can't be Montclair tomorrow. And if we are not in full compliance with that housing element, we need to get it done. And we need to start showing something on the ground that's being done. Again, we talk about the free market, except of course, when it comes to other things. But with housing, oh, it's the free market. Anyway, I'd like us to really work on this and take RENA seriously. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Ru, I think that's what we're trying to do here. And I mean, I'm proud of our city of Montclair. You know, in our city of Montclair, we own, I think, over 100 units of low-mot housing that the city's purchased, along with the partnerships we've, we've developed with National Corps and the, the San Diego County Housing Authority. So I think our city of Montclair has done a lot for affordable housing. There's more, there's room for improvement, there's no doubt about it. We are not on Norwalk and I kind of find that offensive when you mention that Montclair. We're, we're going to comply with the state housing element plan according to the law the best we can. We'll lay down, we'll lay the foundation into the ground in terms of our zoning requirements and our land use requirements. But at the end of the day, it's going to be the market's going to dictate what housing, what commerce goes into the ground here in Montclair. And this is part of the exercise we're doing through the housing element plan and through the general plan. So, Councilmember Ru. Excuse me, Councilmember Lopez.
Three questions. One to Ms. Walker, if she's still on the line.
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you. I know you got to get going to family. Families, family's important. The mayor actually just may have alluded to it, but we as a council just recently purchased some single-family homes. And then, of course, we make them available to low-income families based on need. When you were preparing this report for us, were those homes, even though they're a handful, were they factored into our low housing, I mean, our, gosh, I'm drawing a blank on the word, arena numbers?
Well, the RENA is a projected need, but they were not included in that table that showed credits. So it is something that the city will have to prepare annual reports showing progress on the different programs that are identified. And this would be something that you would report as part of that annual report.
Because even though they're a handful, they'd no doubt would help us in, in that regard. So I just was wondering if your stats here included those, but thank you for clarifying that. And thank you for your time and being with us here this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Just two questions to Director Diaz, if I could. You stated the present plan that we have allows for emergency housing for the homeless.
That's correct.
Do, do those figures get credited towards RENA?
They would if they get built. I believe, Sarah, is that, that's true, because they, they would be considered as part of meeting those RENA numbers, or at least for, for the homeless count in emergency.
So I, I don't, I understand that this is not actual a home, but are, do we get any type of credit whenever we temporarily house a homeless individual or individuals, say, in a hotel or motel?
I don't think so, but Sarah, do you have an answer on that?
Again, you have, so it's not tied to the RENA, because the RENA is really reflective of like actual production of units. However, in your housing plan, you, you have a program that's aimed at homeless assistance. So this would show progress towards me implementing that program, which again, is a good thing in HCD's eyes. So they're going to look at your annual report and see that you're making progress
Okay.
on meeting the, the needs of the community.
Thank you for that. That's good. Good to hear. The subdivision that you mentioned, you said it was, could you actually repeat it? Because I got mixed up.
Mission Boulevard, where Miha Sienda, old nightclub used to be on, there's a.
Oh, yes.
A property that if you go by today is vacant. There was a house on one side, Miha Sienda on the other side, and now those structures are gone. That's a 22-unit, single-family development that's intended to do two things, designed to kind of fit the development pattern in that area that's there, but it also included a density bonus request to be able to do at least four single-family homes that would be made available to, for purchase for affordable, affordable houses for qualifying individuals. We also have two projects, two of the properties that are identified as, I think it's 14 and 24 on the map that you see before you that are awaiting the zone changes to develop housing on those particular sites. And they would include, at least we've been in discussions with them about doing intensity bonus for those projects so that they could do affordable housing as well. So the actual numbers haven't been worked out yet, but those are projects that are pending and waiting for this housing element approval to be done.
The project that you mentioned on the old Miha Sienda site, that staff report that went to planning, could you please send it to me tomorrow? I would like to, to read that, please.
Sure, we can send it to you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I think we're down with this section. How about a five-minute break? Everybody okay with that? Five-minute break. Got to refresh ourselves. Okay, so I think we're done with the housing element plan. And I think the next section here, Kaiser, is going to be the Arrowhead Amud specific plan.
Yes, Mayor.
There it is.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the, the Amud specific plan covers those areas north of the freeway that are not covered by any other specific plan. These are the northwest and the northeast corners of your city. And they're unique and they're distinct and separate in its character and intensity. But this allows them to be addressed in, in, with a specific plan, allows that specific plan to then be also carried forward in the general plan. So the guiding principles are to really establish, and the vision is to establish two wonderful neighborhoods. One on the, on the west side, north and south of Arrow, that capitalizes on, on the, on the San Antonio Channel, creates a new park, encourages development to occur over an incremental period of time. And then on the east side, where you, where you, where Central Avenue is essentially the, the divider between the downtown and the Amud neighbor, the Frontage Road encourages similar type of development that can take advantage of the proximity to the transit station. And then behind, it supports all of the existing industrial uses. There is a strategy to look at and examine some of the warehouse users and see if there's an opportunity to encourage small-scale manufacturing within, within that area. There is already residential uses. You have a mobile home park that's there. It's staying, it's not going anywhere. This allows us to consider perhaps some. This allows us to consider perhaps some mixed use that is primarily supportive of the, of the workforce that exists there currently and the workforce that could exist in the This is, this is an aerial view showing the creek corridor on the bottom right, the San Antonio Channel, the new park, and potential redevelopment that could occur that respects the context, the single-family context that it abuts to and transitions into, in form and intensity, so that it's contextual, but also takes advantage of the frontage. It opens up to the creek rather than backs up to the creek. So you have a walkway, you have access to the creek, potentially at some point in the near future, as Commissioner Patel was suggesting, maybe even across the channel into, into some of the basins that you have after you address some of the liability issues that they have. This is the east side, looking at again, a variety of small-scale industrial uses, organized around a public realm, and that where that specific location, what scale that location might be of the public realm, can be determined at the later stages. But this essentially calls out for the need to have a space, a gathering space that can act as an organizing element for users that could potentially occur around that space. Mixed-use development could be encouraged, and it respects the existing industrial fabric and protects and preserves it and encourages redevelopment opportunities of some of the underutilized and vacant parcels. There is an opportunity we have, and when we looked at some of the parking lots in the Amud area, some of these parking lots lie fallow, particularly on the weekend, and they can be repurposed for temporary events. And this is just one example of what could happen in, in some of those parking lots, which are, you know, the parking lots supporting warehouse users, and they're fairly large in scale, but they could be repurposed for a temporary period of time to bring civic engagement, civic activities, and to get people excited, people who are working there and living there, to provide them a place of recreation and culture. Now, the Amud is, unlike the general plan, is a specific plan, so it includes, besides vision policy, it includes a code. And the code essentially recognizes that you have essentially three different areas in the Amud. You have a frontage along Central that hearkens back to the downtown context that it's responding to, but as you go back from that frontage on Central, it's a lower-scale industrial development that supports small-scale manufacturing and warehouse facilities. And the form-based code allows us in this, in this area particularly to address scale and context where traditional zoning, because it's a two-dimensional tool, cannot. Because if the context is a frontage, then you have one type of standards that affect that frontage, but as you move away from that context and you go into a residential context or a warehouse mixed-use context, then there are different standards that apply. So that flexibility comes when you start dealing in the third dimension, which the form-based code allows us to do. So that's the Amud. I'm going to now go on to the corridors code. The corridors code is essentially, again, just to refocus, the general plan talks about directing growth, primarily a large portion of it to the downtown area, north of the freeway. And then some of the growth is also recommended along its corridors, the corridor being primarily Central, Hold, and Mission. Hold currently has a specific plan, and that plan is, I don't know, maybe it's outdated. I don't know when it was produced, but the standards are no longer applicable. So this focuses regulations to bring current regulations into compliance with the general plan, the goals of the general plan, which is to encourage growth of these corridors, growth and redevelopment of these corridors, and create standards that are very similar in format, but very contextual, because the context on, on Central, on Mission, and, and Hold is different, the context that you would find in the Amud area, for example. But it's the same format, so it's the same code, same type of coding that we have. That's essentially looking at bringing the existing zoning regulations for the corridors in conformance with your general plan. That's the corridor code in summary. And then everything is brought together in your zoning map. Again, as I mentioned before, if you, if you want to know what we were working on for a year, this is the document, and just refining the standards and making sure they are just right for the city of Montclair. So this is the overall zoning map that not only incorporates all of the specific areas, including Amud, includes the corridors, but also fixes some of the, some of the issues that you had with your existing zoning. For example, many of your churches, many of your civic institutions, many of your schools are zoned residential. Well, the residential standards don't apply to a civic institution. There are, there are separate standards for civic institutions. So it's, it allows the city to not only bring those land uses into conformance, but also to update and, and resolve some of the inconsistencies that you had in your zoning ordinance that you carried for, that you were carrying on for, for decades. So this opportunity allows us to fix all of those, and that's what we've been working on frankly, for the, for the last few months. So I, Mayor, I think that's the, council members, that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I like the land use designations, Arrow I'm okay with, but I noticed in the corridor, it's basically more towards, affects more Hold and some Central too, but you have a commercial mixed use, which is some of the key components, key areas, and then you have most of it, Hold and Central, for example, it's called neighborhood edge. I realize lots of Central Avenue is residential, Hold obviously is, I think, most of it's commercial, but I just see some designations under number three, eating, eating drink establishments, where it's allowed under a CUP in the commercial, but it's not allowed in neighborhood edge. So for example, coffee shop with a thrive, I'm sorry, a microbrewery. I don't think a microbrewery is going to go there, but it's a CUP in the commercial, but it's not permitted in a neighborhood edge, or outdoor cafe or dining, same thing, CUP for commercial, but neighborhood edge is not, is not permitted. Then you go into the services, for example, professional administrative services or real estate service offices, it's a permitted use in the commercial mixed use, but it's a non-permitted use in the neighborhood edge. And the same thing under vehicle services, for example, you can buy vehicle parts under a CUP in the commercial, but you can't do that in the neighborhood edge. And I'm not sure why there's this big difference there. Go ahead, Mike, you're up to the podium.
We were trying to make the best decisions relative to these particular uses for these different zones. Sometimes it was a question about the proximity of the zone to the existing single-family neighborhoods, and other times it was something that seemed to be more appropriate in one of the other zones where you don't have immediate residential uses nearby. The CUP process allows the planning commission to make discretionary decisions on each proposal. So each proposal that comes before the planning commission does not have to be approved
Right.
unless you can make the findings that its uses are pretty much, could be, with conditions, be under control.
Right. But why can't we have some of that in neighborhood, neighborhood edge as well, as far as zoning?
We can take a look at some of those things and maybe make some adjustments.
It's just some of the stuff like, you know, why can't you have a, you know, outdoor, under eating, drink establishment, outdoor cafe or dining in the neighborhood edge, but you can do a commercial use? I'm just using that as one example, but there's some others, you know, I, some others.
Yeah, partly because it's proximity to the single-family neighborhoods.
Well, I understand that. I just, if you take another look at this, go through it.
We, yeah, if you want to make some suggestions, we'll be able to maybe.
At least take another angle of this. I think some of this could be, some of the stuff non-permitted neighborhood edge can be permitted under, you know, or a CUP. So appreciate that. I'm going to start with the commissioners again. Commissioners, any questions on these last two presentations? No? 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 Okay. No. Councilmember Rue, then.
Yes, first of all, Mr. Mayor, I put my light on because I was going to make some of the same comments you did about the businesses there. I concur with you, we need to look at this. When I look at this plan, I'm thinking on Arrow, and I drive it almost every day. The north and south sides have industrial, light industrial, not heavy. Look at the Laird Industrial Park. They have a lot of industrial things that, many of those places pay fairly good wages, which is what we need. What will happen to them? This is my first question. Does anybody know? Will they still be permitted?
They can stay and continue to operate the way they have until such time they want to take, whoever purchased the property wants to take advantage and develop to the maximum ability that the Amud would allow it to do. So it could be different. But for the time being, these uses are considered valid uses and can continue to operate as possible. There's no intent to create any non-conforming situations.
So let's say I have a small machining shop there. I decide I no longer want to stay in business, I'm selling it to somebody else. That will be able to stay there?
Yes, if, if you sold your business as a machine shop to the mayor, then the mayor could continue to operate that particular business just the way you had it before. If you, sometimes the lapse in time makes a difference, and that you wait a long time and then come back, let's say a year later, and then maybe you would need to go back to, check back the, the land use tables and find out what you could do with that particular site.
And what happens to the automotive uses there? We have some automotive repair places, again, very convenient for residents who need to have their car repaired.
Those particular uses can continue to stay as well. I used to use an auto repair place on Arrow Highway Two, and they stayed in business for the longest time, but now they're out of business. And so whatever comes in subsequent to that original approval would be something different that would, but what could be something that the code allows now for a different use. Or if there was a conditional use permit on the site, then that conditional use permit runs in perpetuity, so that particular uses could continue to be there.
Yeah, and the commerce.
Because with the industrial, what I see is it, it is very important to, the component of every city, this is light industrial, and these are fairly good paying jobs. I mean, one of the companies in there, actually, in Laird I know, but some of the others, they make precision lenses for microscopes. That's a very good paying job. Some of the auto places, these are good paying jobs. Our students graduate from Chafee, they have a job right there nearby, and I just don't want to see those go away. I realize some people don't like those uses in a city, but I think they're so important.
No, those are the great kinds of uses that we actually would like to encourage to come and fill those spaces, those spaces that are in the Amud district, so they, for the same reason that you mentioned, they either provide jobs, opportunities, sometimes they're high-paying jobs. A lot of what would probably happen in the, in the interim at the beginning would be just the encouragement of people to remodel their buildings and to make them more attractive to, to not only drawing new uses, but at some point in the future, if the markets change, we're talking about markets all night, then, then the opportunity to do something different could be done based on what the code, the Amud specific plan allows.
Because some of those uses there do look good, I'm thinking, and I don't have the address, it's on north side of Arrow, almost to Mills, and it's where a few years ago I had the problem with the bird guy, but
Right.
there's a CPA there, there's an auto repair place there, Boy Scouts used to have their office there, or a small satellite. It looks really good.
Right, and most of those places are leased, so they, and they continue to be good, even if they.
Laird looks good, so I'm seeing some of these owners are already just taking care of it because it's attractive, but you've answered my question. Thank you. And I agree, Mr. Mayor, we should look at this.
Okay, so we got to do the Sequo next? Was that, that's up next?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, who's doing Sequo?
Greg, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for having me. Members of the council and planning commissioners, my name's Greg Martin, I'm a planner, senior planner with Ringcon Consultants, and we wrote the environmental impact report for this project, the general plan update and the specific plans. So next slide, please. And our role in the process was to handle the Sequo work, Health and Environmental Quality Act, and the purposes of which are to disclose potentially significant environmental effects of projects, proposed actions, identify ways to avoid or reduce adverse environmental effects from projects, consider feasible alternatives to them, foster inter-agency coordination in the review of projects, and enhance public participation in the planning process. And I would like to say that we were working with Ringlaw Consultants as a subconsultant to Kaiser, and working throughout the plan development process to also handle the environmental review, so it was coordinated with the production of these plans all along throughout the process. So next slide, please. Thank you. So this slide shows the process, and because we were handling this process throughout the development of the plan, you know, both were rather long processes, and that's not unusual for general plan updates, especially if they're comprehensive updates such as this one. Notice of preparation of an EIR was published in November of 2020, notified the public that we were going to be undertaking this process, that, and gave people, the public, an opportunity to comment on what should be studied in the EIR, it's called the scoping process, what should be the scope of the EIR. The close of that public comment period was at the end of December 2020, and then we proceeded to write the EIR, take the information from the proposed general plan update and write the draft EIR, and that was circulated for a public comment from the end of July 2022 until September 8th, 2022. And there was another notice, notice of availability of an EIR released at that time to inform the public about the availability of the EIR, including neighboring jurisdictions, the State Office of Planning and Research, so really trying to publish, publicize the availability of the general plan and the EIR, and solicit public comment on it, and comment from other agencies. And so we did receive comments on, on the general plan EIR. Those comments and our proposed responses to them were provided into the city, and we have had quite a gap, just because the actual adoption of the general plan update and, and specific plans that go with it has been delayed. But now we're in the certification process at the, you know, the far right of this slide, where the certification, meaning city council certification of the project, or approval of the project, adoption of the plan, and certification of the EIR are expected in December of this year, as was previously mentioned. So next slide, please. Okay. And we'll get into the specific impacts that were identified in the EIR. Did want to mention that this, as Kaiser or somebody else mentioned earlier, I believe, that this is a programmatic EIR, general plan update, of course, it's not a single specific development project. And so we're looking at, we looked at the potential environmental effects largely of growth that might occur under the general plan update, but also where that growth would occur and what form. And Kaiser, I think, mentioned that think, mentioned that there are streamlining, SEQA streamlining opportunities for a programmatic EIR, and that would mean, for example, that projects being brought in or developments that are being proposed in the city in the future, if we can identify mitigation measures that may need to apply to projects in the future, we can identify them now, and then the future projects can refer back to those mitigation measures, and also policies and programs for the general plan, and identify that there would not be significant environmental impacts from their project, because they can refer back to mitigation measures and programs and policies from the general plan update and specific plans, but also the EIR. So, in the draft EIR, we identified significant, potentially significant environmental impacts that could be mitigated through mitigation measures in the areas of biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, geology and soils, and noise. And next slide, please. And then also significant and unavoidable impacts. These are potentially significant and unavoidable. And those are in the area of air quality impacts, and the AQ1, AQ2, AQ3, those are what each impact is labeled in the EIR. But to sum up what those impacts, the basic nature of those impacts, it is that construction and operational missions from future projects carried out under the general plan update and specific plans may conflict with or obstruct implementation of the air districts, air quality management plan, and result in adverse impacts to local and regional air quality. And I'll get into a little of why that is and what the impacts might be under alternatives shortly here. And also, significant unavoidable impact related to cultural resources, because projects carried out under the plan could result in adverse impacts to historic resources. And for both of these, or for some of these significant and unavoidable impacts, it was identified as unavoidable because we could not, because we did not know the exact nature of specific future development, we in some cases could not basically guarantee that mitigation measures would be able to reduce impacts down below the established thresholds of significance, or fully mitigate those impacts to a less significant level. So, next slide, please. Okay. And the EIR also did look at alternatives to the proposed project, too. First of all, no project, and that's required under SEQA, that SEQA documents do analyze a no-project alternative. For a plan, like the general plan update and the specific plans, no project in that case actually means continued implementation of the city's existing plans, in this case, the city's current general plan. And then we also studied a reduced-growth alternative, which assumes citywide development would be near the low-range, quote-unquote, low-range projections included in the market analysis that was done as part of the general plan. And that was so we could have some numbers to look at, that we picked those numbers from the market analysis. But really, the point is to look at, would any of these significant unavoidable environmental impacts be able to be reduced substantially under a reduced-growth scenario? And there in that table, you see the, how much growth reduction is actually entailed in that reduced-growth alternative. So, next slide, please. Okay. And then, also, we are required under SEQA to identify an environmentally superior alternative in terms of the environmental impacts that were required to study under SEQA. And we found that the reduced-growth alternative was the environmentally superior alternative to both the proposed plan and the no-project alternative. And that was because it would reduce growth-related impacts, but it would still retain planned goals and policies that would help achieve project objectives and reduce environmental impacts. However, the reduced-growth alternative would still lead to growth and some of the same environmental impacts that would result from the proposed plan, if sometimes to a lesser degree. And this growth would, on average, be more dispersed throughout the community, because there would be less growth in the plan's focus areas, because those focus areas would not be adopted. And this growth would still also have significant and unavoidable impacts to air quality and historic resources, just like the plan, resulting from development carried out under this alternative, although those impacts might be reduced in some cases because of the less overall development. It'd still exist, and they could still be significant and unavoidable. Next slide, please. And then we looked at these alternatives' relationship to plan objectives, and plan is the general plan update and the whole project. And so, the reduced-growth alternative would not achieve the plan objective of attracting and retaining high-wage and high-value enterprises and diversifying and increasing the local tax base as well as the plan, because it would not attract or create as many jobs, create as much economic growth, or increase the local tax base to the, to as great as an extent as the growth accommodated by the plan. And this alternative would also not help meet the city's RENA allocation as well as the plan. So, in other words, there may be, or there hypothetically could be reduced environmental impacts from less growth, but also some of the plan objectives that would come from that growth would not be met as well for the same reason. And then, the no-project alternative would not include, basically be continuing with the current general plan, and would therefore not include the adjustments in land use, beautification, and placemaking included in the plan, and would lead to more dispersed development throughout the community, and would therefore not meet the plan's objectives related to these improvements. Next slide, please. And that's it. Brief presentation, but I can take any questions related to the EIR or the SEQA process if you have any. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions, Councilmember Rue?
Yeah, yes, this is just kind of a whatever question. It's a good job here looking at ground, soil, water, things of that sort. We need to do that. Do we have a way to be able to adjust this to future emerging contaminants? I mean, five years ago, most of us knew nothing about PFOS. Now, we have to look at it. It's, for those of you who don't know, it's part of the compounds of Teflon that's in clothing, almost everything we have. We're beginning to look at the effects of lithium, not just in the groundwater table, as these batteries for electric cars are, you know, improperly stored, but lithium in the air, because of, like the port, St., the Vincent Thomas Bridge with all the fire the other day, that lithium is out in the air, it's getting into people's lungs. Do we have a way to update this for emerging contaminants in the future?
You can do future environmental review on, on specific projects.
Okay.
You don't really have a way to update the EIR on this specific project, meaning the general plan update and with the specific plans also, after it's certified. But certainly, I mean, the city could study those issues as part of, you know, its own, its own study in cooperation with another agency or through grant funding, or through environmental review related to either future-specific projects or maybe another citywide project. But once the EIR for a project is certified, unless the project itself has changed, then you can't really update the EIR. I mean, there are, and, you know, you may update your general plan in the future, so at that time, you could determine what level of environmental review you would want to do for that general plan update, and maybe look at some of those issues at that point. Those are just some ideas. And maybe city staff or Kaiser would also like to weigh in on that as well.
It was just, I, just an observation for the future, because these are things we're all going to have to start dealing with. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Just quickly, as a response, the, we can't predict the future, what's coming. And if there are certain things that come up in the future that we hadn't anticipated, you can certainly bring your general plan up for reconsideration of specific portions and evaluate those specific portions, and they can be reviewed as a supplemental EIR. But it needs to be, I would just add, it needs to be, there needs to be a nexus between the project that is being proposed. So, Teflon on clothes might not be something that maybe, I'm just using that as an example.
Right, but the PFOS in general.
Yes, yes.
I was just using so people know what PFOS is. It's in, you know, and in large quantities in the soil, it's creating a lot of problems.
Yes. So, all of those.
You know that.
Yes.
Councilmember Rue, I mean, Councilman Lopez.
To the gentleman in the sky that's being broadcast in, can I get your name again, please? What was his name? Greg Martin.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Martin, I have a question. Regarding cultural resources impact, and it says, "Projects carried out under the plan could result in adverse impacts to historic resources." Could you give me an example of that here in the city that you looked at?
I don't know if we looked at specific properties, because we don't have, this plan doesn't, wouldn't immediately lead to specific development proposals that we can identify at this time. But, you know, under SEQA and under other state guidelines and statutes, there are certain, like, age thresholds for properties and buildings, usually 50, about 50 years old, I believe, at which point they become potentially historically significant. So, even this because of age, there's the potential for some of those plus-50-year-old properties to be historic. And, you know, given the extent of the number of properties that could be potentially affected in areas where the general plan update is identified as potential areas of change, I think that's part of the reason for that conclusion.
And the reason why I'm asking is because, to my knowledge, I don't recall us in the city having many historically designated sites. I mean, we're a relatively new city compared to Chino, Ontario, Upland, even Claremont. We're 60 years old, we're still a baby in the West End. So, I was just wondering what properties, if any, were indeed looked at?
There were not specific properties identified, and that can actually go to the impact analysis. Yeah, and it says, well, we did identify in the setting discussion of, in the cultural resources section of the EIR, there's one known historical resource that is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, and one determined eligible for it. But that, we're not saying that specific property would be impacted, and we go on to say, in addition to these known historical resources, there may be other yet identified resources. And that's part of that, is taking into account that the plan, the general plan update, would be carried out over a long time, because, so, even if we didn't identify specific resources right now, properties may become eligible later, and so, we're acknowledging that possibility, and saying there's, you know, new development occurring under this plan, including development of public spaces, and that these activities could have the potential to, you know, result in demolition of properties, alteration, et cetera. And so, that was the reason for that conclusion, that there were potential impacts. The plan could potentially impact historic resources.
Councilmember Lopez, I would like to add to Greg. We did conduct a historic context statement at the start of this process. We had a person who has expertise in historic preservation and cultural resources help us, and they conducted this study. And I'd like to point out that the cultural and historic resources, some of them are above-ground, but some of them are underground. And these are paleontological resources or resources that may have certain artifacts, or that may be of value to certain tribes. So, all of those were considered in the environmental review document. So, while you may not have substantive, above-ground resources, there are statements in here that protect some of the resources that may exist. So, when you have development occurring, for example, you might have some mitigation measures that require you to monitor what's coming out of the ground, and make sure that appropriate agencies are notified, and those resources are addressed in the most appropriate manner. I also want to suggest this is a tricky part, because you are a 60-year-old city, and historic resources are anything that's over 40 years. And anything that tells a compelling story, a story that is, you know, for example, the ranch subdivisions that you have within the city, they are 40 years old. But some of those ranch homes have been modified from their previous, previous architecture that they were built on. So, do they qualify, or do they tell a compelling story of a suburbia? Perhaps not. But nevertheless, they were studied, they were evaluated as part of this general plan through a context statement. If the context statement had found considerable resources, the next step would be to conduct a historic survey. Historic survey would then identify resources that exist in the city, and have appropriate protection measures for those. But in this case, there was none that were found above-ground, but they did suggest that because of the tribes that existed in this area, that there may be some cultural resources that we need to protect.
Sir, I am very intrigued and interested in those findings. If you could please, Ed or Mike, I'd like to get a copy of that myself, just to review.
For which project?
The environmental impact report, the, I'm sorry, the SEQA issue, regarding the findings on the historical findings, underground significance and all.
Well, when they do the environmental, and Greg can corroborate this, when they're doing environmental impact reports, these are just one of the standard areas of study that they have to go through in preparing those documents. So, cultural resources is a study area, and then they evaluate it based on what they can tell from our surveys of the city for this particular document. But I wanted to point out that as each project comes on, if there's a project that comes forward to us, and we have to do initial studies for environmental analysis through SEQA, this is a standard study area, and we go through these things routinely. This is, we're, the planning department does this all the time. The two projects I can think of right away are the Tiki's. When we did the Tiki's project, we had to do cultural studies and to determine the nature of that particular, of those resources that were there, and find out what the true history of those were. And it turned, and in that case, it determined that what everybody thought was really, really old, most of those historical resources had been altered significantly, and the original items and structures were gone. The other one I can think of right now is the Quonset Hat that used to be up here where the village of Montclair is being built. There was a, you remember the building that had the round? We had to do a cultural study on that thing, and also determined that there were too many. It wasn't, it didn't meet the threshold for preservation like we thought it was, but we went through the study process and were able to determine that we could move forward with the project. So, it's a routine process that we go through all the time. The other thing, if I just may finish, every time they do digging, we have tribal monitors that come, and the developers pay for them to determine and watch the grading process to ensure that nothing that's uncovered, or something that, if anything's uncovered, that they can study it and make sure that it has significance or not. So, these are routine processes we go through all the time.
That said, I would request the underground findings that Kaiser alluded to with respect to this report. I would like to see those, please.
We can get you the environmental impact report altogether.
Please do.
Okay, so.
As an aside, Mr. Diaz, with the Quonset Hat, before it was the dance studio. As an aside, Mr. Diaz, with the Quonset Hat, before it was the dance studio, it was an auto body place known as Walt's Body in Paint. And it dates back to probably, because our neighbors owned it, so it was probably nineteen sixty-six, sixty-seven. And, so.
But because of the age, that's why we did the study.
Quonset Hat, I could, if they were here, they're not, they would tell you there's no historic significance to it.
And Alicia and all these guys can attest that we have good relationship with the Tongva Nation as well as the Gabarinos.
Mr. Martin mentioned.
Hold on, hold on, you know, hold on for a second, let, let, we need to wrap this up. Councilmember Lo, uh, Johnson, did you have something to say? Your light was on earlier.
I'm sorry, I did take the, turn the light off, but I just had one quick comment. When we're talking about cultural and historical sites here in the city of Montclair, we do have at least one, it's called the Reader Ranch.
That's correct.
Yeah, and that was identified as one of those in the EIR, looking back in the introduction section. And, uh, also the Russian Village.
Okay, Councilmember Roux now.
I just wondered, what are the two, uh, you said something about the National Register of Historic Places, there's one item that's going to be on it and potentially another, what are those locations?
Uh, well, actually, one of the council members or planning commissioners just mentioned, um, uh, Reader Ranch, and then, um, then also, uh, the Russian Village, and I can get back to the, uh, part of the, but those were the two. And I can get back to the part of the EIR, um, where it mentions them specifically, but, uh, those, those were the two. Right, review of the National Register and the California Register of Historical Resources. So, yeah, on, uh, page four point five to seven of the EIR, it talks about which, uh, data resources we, or which, which sources we used for, in our research. Revealed there are two designated historical resources in Montclair, the Russian Village Historic District and Reader's Citrus Ranch. Uh, Russian Village is listed in both the National and State Register. Um, and, let's see, Reader's Citrus Ranch has been assigned California, uh, well, it has been assigned a code by the California State Office of Historic Preservation, status code TS2, meaning it was determined eligible for inclusion on the National Register. So I think that's one that's, the one that's potentially eligible for being on the National Register, but it's also listed on the, uh, State Register of Historical Resources.
All right, so let's kind of wrap this up here. We just spent three hours talking about the general plan, the housing only plan, obviously, uh, the two, uh, specific plans, and then the, uh, the environmento. So, this will now, um, will go to the planning commission and city council. I think those dates were announced November and December. Um, I think there were some comments made today, I think everybody got their comments and what they wanted to say about the plans. Um, everybody has a copy of the documents in front of you, so you have a chance to read it further. And, um, so I'll leave it here, is there anything else anybody wanted to say before we wrap this up? The commissioners, anything else from commissioners? Go ahead, Xavier.
Um, if we, uh, as we read this, you know, over the next few weeks and come up with questions, should we submit them?
Yeah, you'll submit them to staff?
Uh, Mike Diaz?
Michael Diaz, from the commissioners.
All right, that was it, that was my only question.
Okay, with that, how about councilmembers, any further comments from councilmembers? No, no? Okay, I appreciate everybody's, uh, feeling here today, and we went through this exercise of three hours. I'll leave it here, this is a great city we live in, and, uh, I think this plan is, is a new avenue for our city to, to move forward, so I'll leave it there, and, uh, good night. Oh, before I do that, I gotta say, do we have any members of the public that want to address the city council? This is an opportunity to address the city council at this time. If not, we're adjourned.